Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, March 25th, 2024. It is exactly 6:00 PM, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, AFSMI-C.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Miss Galley, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. And the board will return to open session by 6:30. Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, March 25th, 2024, at exactly 6:30, and the board just returned from executive session where we unanimously approved an MOA with AFSMI Unit C. At this time, I would ask you, please, to silence your cellphones, and if you are video or audio recording this meeting, please notify me as the chair. Thank you. And that your equipment will not interfere in the conducting of this meeting. The second piece I would like to ask is, I would like to make a change in the agenda, and I would like to bring business item number seven up into a public hearing, as it was noticed in the paper as of March 15th, 2024. And I would ask that the board make a motion and move that.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any proclamations tonight? Okay, hearing none. We will move to recognition. And I would ask that Sam Patterson, please approach. I know you're here. So Sam, I asked Sam if he would show up tonight, and he emails me back, and he says, "Well, for which agenda item?" And I said, "Sam, I'm not going to tell you because it is about and for you." End of email. Send. So Sam, we would like to honor you tonight with a plaque, and I would like to present it to you, to Samuel H. Patterson, Jr., in grateful appreciation of your extraordinary service and dedication for nine years as town of Falmouth Select Board member on March 25th, 2024. We have made this for you, and we're keeping one to hang up here in the slide we're leaving.
If I could just say one thing, that I'm actually more proud of the 16 years that I spent on the school committee, because I really felt like that was the investment that we were making in the future of the town. So combining the two together, you know, it's been an honor to serve the public, and I really appreciate the confidence that the voters of this town actually bestowed on me by electing me into those positions. So happy spring.
Would anyone on the board like to make any comments? Mr. Brown?
I'm just happy, I really enjoyed working with Sam. He always had a perspective to share and always gave me some insight that I might not have had otherwise. It was always good working with Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Miss Galley?
Repeat what Mr. Brown said. I knew Sam from Rotary. I don't think there's many people, if any, that are more committed to Falmouth and the wonderful work that Sam has done, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say it was a pleasure working with Sam. I feel like I learned quite a bit from you about a lot of different topics. We had some really good conversations even before I was on the board, and I really appreciate all that you've done for service of Falmouth, but also for me personally in our conversations.
And Sam, I would like to thank you. Where are you? Not just for your work as a member of the Select Board, but also for your dedication and the time and investment you put into our schools. As you know, that is very, the schools department is very near and dear to my heart, and it is the investment in our kids and our future. So thank you very much for that, Sam.
Chair.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. Patterson certainly showed that he was committed to this town, and with every meeting and everything he did, and for that, I have the utmost respect for Sam. I may not have always agreed with him, but he was a very worthy opposite in some discussions and an ally in others, and for that, Sam, I thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Sam.
Good job.
Okay, we will move into announcements. Are there any announcements from the board?
If we could just go back up to recognition, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to recognize Mr. Renshaw and the Town Manager's Office in getting out the agenda and the materials a couple of days early. I think it's a benefit to us on the Select Board, but also to the people of the town having that information a little earlier, so I appreciate your efforts in getting that done.
Thank you.
I'd also like to just recognize that the Falmouth High School girls hockey team had a wonderful season this past year. Lost in the final at the TD Garden to Duxbury, but looks like they're ready and primed for a good season next year with a lot of young talent, so I just think we want to recognize their efforts as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miss Galley.
And one of the younger girls teams actually won the championship, I believe. I'm not sure exactly which age group. And one more thing.
Yes.
It's Women's History Month, right?
Yes, it is.
We have a lot of women in Falmouth who've made a lot of history around here, and got a couple still doing it, so.
I'm assuming you mean us.
Yeah.
Just checking, just checking.
Does that mean we're old?
No.
Okay, good.
No, I'm not.
All right. Any other?
We better stop now.
It's gonna be a long evening.
Okay, that's it. Do I need to gavel you? Any other proclamations?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move into announcements. I just have one, and I know I announced it at our workshop, but I'm gonna announce it again. The Falmouth Housing Corp. has applications for the Scranton Main Apartments, and those applications are online. There are two different applications, and I believe that the lottery is May 18th.
Do you have to be 55-plus for that?
I believe it is senior housing. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, we will move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on this agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is anyone here for public comment? No? Okay, move right through that. We'll move right into committee interviews. And our first committee interview is for the Affirmative Action Committee. Manan Zhu? Did I say that correctly? Okay, I tried. Say it for me.
Appreciate it. It's Manan Zhu.
Manan Zhu, thank you. Could you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
With pleasure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's Manan Zhu Jonathan. I'm seeking to fill a vacant position with the Affirmative Action Committee, which the chair is presenting here tonight. I have two master's degrees that I earned through bilateral and multilateral cooperation between countries that specifically focuses on cultural understanding and exchanges. And I have attended several of the committee meetings prior to hiatus and the last two meetings as well. More into the personal stories, I've been a resident of Falmouth for about a decade now, over a decade, and over the years, I have personally encountered discrimination and racism in various forms, from the most mundane to the most severe in this town. But I've also witnessed the positive changes that our town has made so far and the social progresses that's been made. I want to contribute. I want to join the effort to make in Falmouth more welcoming and more inclusive to everyone, regardless of their cultural background. And that's why I'm here tonight, and I thank you for considering my candidacy.
I see in your application, you speak three languages?
I do.
Tell me which ones they are. I'm curious.
English, obviously. Pretty broken, even accent. I'm also fluent in French and my native language, which is Malagaz.
Thank you. I was curious. Any other questions from the board?
I'll just say, I've known Manan Zhu for a while. I consider Manan Zhu a friend, and I think she'd be a wonderful addition to this committee.
You certainly have the educational background for the job, so I would certainly think we're lucky to have you for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Was that a motion?
I'll say, Madam Chair, I'd move, let's see, to appoint Manan Zhu Jonathan to the Affirmative Action Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your willingness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second committee interview is for the Board of Health, Dr. George Topolous. Welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to tell us about yourself that isn't in your packet? And if you do, if you could speak into the mic, that would be great.
No.
All righty then. Any questions from the board? Seems pretty cut and dry.
It's a pretty thorough application and lots of education and lots of experience, so I think we're lucky to have him. I would move appointment of Mr. Topolous to a term ending 6/30/25.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Herbst. I think I saw him, too. There he is.
Yep.
Is there anything that we don't know about you, Mr. Herbst?
Well, did you check the police blotter today?
No, we have someone here representing the police station.
Okay. I only speak one language, unfortunately, and I don't have a MD degree. But I congratulate those people for applying. And thank you for the opportunity to be interviewed. Just before we get started, I checked the openings for committees and boards today on the website, and there were 27 openings for positions, volunteer positions in this town. And maybe you could, maybe Doug, you could refresh my memory. Did the Select Board used to advertise those openings at least once a month in the enterprise?
I don't know exactly what the schedule was, but we do advertise them regularly when they're open. And with 44 committees with an average of...
Pardon?
With 44 committees, 27 is...
Yeah, I understand that. I wonder whether or not you might reconsider advertising them in the newspaper for several reasons, but remember that if a board or a committee is operating without a full slate, that loads up the issues on the ones, the people that are on those committees and on those boards. So it's really important that the public knows about those openings. It's posted on the website, but a lot of people don't search that out. But if they read it in the paper, they might tweak something in their brain and say, "Gee, that's something I might like to do." So my suggestion to you is to at least advertise them once a month, and so that you have more opportunities to fill those positions.
Thank you for that. Any questions of Mr. Herbst?
No, I have no questions. I know Mr. Herbst has served in this role previously. I think he did three terms on this, right?
Yep. Yeah, you were our liaison, the CPC.
So I would move appointment of Mr. Herbst for a term. Do you want to go for the long one, ending 6/30/26?
That's two years, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm too old for three.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued service.
Okay, Conservation Commission, Ronald Driscoll. Welcome.
Okay. I like to go like the doctors want. That'd be nice and easy.
Anything you'd like to share with us?
I've been a family resident for four years. We've been coming down to my wife's family's beach, open racing beach, for the last 35 or 40 years, and I have a background that I think fits in with the Conservation Commission. I have the time. I like to volunteer, and that's about it for my, I think, put on the packet.
And Mr. Driscoll's been waiting since six o'clock.
Questions?
Pardon?
Been waiting since six o'clock.
Yes. Questions from the board?
Any kind of, if I could...
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Any kind of sense of position on coastal resiliency? Do you have any kind of...
Pardon?
Yeah, are you predisposed to any kind of ideas about coastal resiliency? You might not think about that, but it's a part of the Conservation Commission that...
I'm sorry, I said that...
Do you have any kind of thoughts on coastal resiliency?
Well, it should be resilient, you know, we try as much as we can. I've read the Woods Hole report from a couple of years ago, and I walk Shore Drive all the time, and I can see the damage that the storms are doing at every high tide. So yeah, I'd like to, you know, connect the Conservation Commission and the resiliency somehow. They all sort of looking at the same thing, the same goal.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Protect the priceless wetlands.
Exactly. That's it for me.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move to appoint Ronald Driscoll to the Conservation Commission with an unexpired term ending June 30th, 25.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council on Aging, Kevin Murphy.
Another known commodity.
Lot of talent in the room tonight.
Lot of talent tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for interviewing me this evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Kevin Murphy. I served three terms as the Board of Selectmen, two terms, took two years off at my wife's suggestion, I might add, and came back specifically to try to push through and get an opportunity for the town to get funding and get a place for the senior center to move forward. Very happy it did. I take full advantage of it now. Great, great people there who work there. I think I can bring some institutional knowledge to that group, funding and things of that nature, on how the town works and the inner workings there. That being said, it's one of those things that rather than use the recreation center at my age, we start to use the senior center more at my age. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Well-known.
No, for me, I'm just happy to see Kevin back.
Happy to make a motion to appoint Kevin Murphy to the Council on Aging.
With the term ending...
Term ending 6/30/25.
6/30/25.
25.
That's 24 in the packet. Is it 24 or 25?
Is it really only 24? Sorry. I should have looked before I spoke.
You shouldn't have trusted the people next to you.
That's 24.
Unexpired term.
Well, it's a short one, but you can always re-up.
This is true.
Okay, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming back. Okay, we're gonna move into our public hearings, and the first one is a shade tree hearing, and I would ask Mr. Zelinski to please present the notice.
In accordance to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 25th, 6:45 PM, and the Selectmen's office at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. to consider the removal of the following public tree. Location, 556 Main Street, removal of a plantanus asifolia, London Plain, 17.5 inches. Reason, close proximity to proposed driveway for the new development, Liberty Green, as well as unsightly appearance from utility pruning. Tree is in the wrong species for the current location under utility lines. The tree identified above has been posted for public inspection. Any inspections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior or during this hearing. The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Town of Falmouth, 416 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. Phone 508-457-2543. Extension 3008. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Good evening. Jeremiah Pearson, tree warden, Town of Falmouth. So just as my opinion stated, the tree is right in the way of where the new entrance to the Liberty Green housing will be. So it's, it's not in great shape anyway, so it won't be a loss to see it removed. And their planting plan, they do have several species to replace it in the front.
Questions from the board?
Nothing really to question. The picture says it all.
Comments from the public on this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any conversation? Any discussion?
I was gonna suggest that we request a couple of trees to be planted, so it sounds like it's already in the works, so I would move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And we're gonna move into our second public hearing filed by the Falmouth Yacht Club. Mr. Zelinski, to serve the notice.
Notice hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amended thereof, that Falmouth Yacht Club located at 290 Clinton Ave., Falmouth, Mass. has applied for a three, for three Sunday entertainment license to be executed on July 23rd, July 21st, and September 1st. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, March 25th, 2024, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov per order of the Select Board.
Thank you. And you're here to represent the applicant?
Yes, I'm the food...
Your name, please?
Ariane Damon, and I'm the Food and Beverage Director. I want to apologize for my apparel. The GM was... The GM was not able to make it, so I was not planning on coming. I would have been a little bit, not in the sports clothes, sorry.
Okay.
But I can speak on it. We did it last year. It's going to be the same setup. It's down by the hoist. All the members are up on the second deck viewing. There's no alcohol served on the first floor. It's not really a floor, it's pavement where the band will be, and we're very cautious of not blocking the driveway of the neighbor who lives directly behind the yacht club.
Questions from the board?
I thought the application was fully informative. It said that they understand that the music's not to go beyond the parking area, and gave the map of where the entertainment would be, and I think that's an improvement over the side by the entrance to the other person's driveway, which was a problem in the past, so I appreciate that.
Yes.
Ask, have there been... Thank you. Have there been any complaints or anything from last year? I remember the driveway issue, but I think that's been resolved.
Yes, Madam Chair, and Select Board Member Scott Price. I understand there have been some noise complaints, I believe, in the past.
Okay.
Events, and I do appreciate, in the application, the applicant stipulated, as Select Board Member Brown said, that the music's not to exceed or extend beyond the parking lot.
Yes.
There had been some complaints in the past, and as part of the suggested motion, I'd recommend stating that if the police respond to a complaint during any one of the three event days regarding loud noise, and by definition exceeding, extending beyond the parking lot boundary, or in violation of the bylaw as determined by the police officer, that the music be stopped.
If a police officer has to show up.
Yeah, police officer has to show up as a result of a complaint.
Is there a way of finding out who filed the complaint? I'm just wondering if it was the neighbor who's directly behind us.
It wouldn't be fair to do that.
Okay, okay.
And I don't have that information.
That's okay. Yeah, I said that.
I recall that most of the complaints were actually of the driveway being blocked.
Okay.
Because the entertainment was on the side.
Mm-hmm.
That was more of a complaint than the noise, actually.
Okay.
That's what I remember. Thank you.
Any comments on this application from the public? Go ahead.
I didn't see any emails about this. We didn't receive anything?
No.
No, not recently.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no public comment, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I'd say it's an improvement over previous events, and I think they're trying to do the right thing, and they seem to understand the conditions that they're working under, so I would move approval and continue to support the event.
I'll second that.
Okay, does someone want to read the motion into the record?
Trying to get through the housing production plan to get to it. There you go.
Okay. Madam Chair, I motion to approve the application filed by Falmouth Yacht Club for three one-day entertainment licenses to be exercised at two-ninety Clinton Ave., Falmouth, on June twenty-third, July twenty-first, and September first, 2024, from 3:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. as presented, with the condition that if the police department responds to a complaint of loud music and determines that it is a violation of the town bylaw, or the volume of music exceeds beyond the parking lot, then the music must cease for the remainder of that day.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will move in to vote to approve the final housing production plan, and I see that we have our town planner Jed Kornak and our housing coordinator Kim Fish with us.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. My name's Jed Kornak, the town planner.
And I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator, and we can see the finish line.
We certainly can.
Not so fast.
I was going to say, we have lots of edits.
So we're here tonight, and we're very excited to be here tonight, because this makes six months of really hard work worth it, essentially. So we're at the very end of this, and we're asking for your vote tonight to approve the final housing production plan. As I mentioned, we started this process back in October of twenty-three. We had two public meetings that were very well attended, the first in November and the second in early January. We talked to a lot of people, got a lot of input about the current housing situation in Falmouth, and then we talked and discussed importantly, goals and strategies moving forward, because the housing production plan is a five-year plan which outlines how we're going to move forward into the future and create more affordable housing. You may remember that in, or late January, we were here and we talked about some of those draft goals and strategies. In late February, we also came before you and presented the draft housing production plan itself. Then on February fifteenth, it went out to public comment. We spent two weeks collecting comments. We received about eleven comments via email. We've included those in the final report that you received via email. Those were all in Appendix C. I won't go through it, but some of the important comments that we received, in fact, one of the more important ones that I think we received was categorizing or organizing the strategies by year. So we had initially organized them by, we called them buckets, and really those were by categories, but someone had indicated that, you know, prioritizing them was a smart idea, which we thought really worked out nicely. And then some comments came in asking for priorities to shift, you know, this should be year one, this should be year two. So what we tried to do and tried to make clear in this five-year plan is that it's not necessarily something that if it doesn't happen in year one, it will never happen. What doesn't happen in year one, we just shift to year two, and we just keep moving until all of those strategies are implemented. And as we talked about in the past, they range from increasing staffing, but also considering amendments to zoning that would allow for additional housing opportunities, to looking at different financial opportunities. So we're very excited. Like I said, we're asking for your vote to approve. The planning board did approve the housing production plan at their last meeting, but as you all know, we did have to amend the plan minorly. We had to make some adjustments to one of the maps included in the plan, and we missed one of the comments, so we added that in, and so tomorrow night will be, I'll be before the planning board, asking them the same vote and explaining what we missed. But the comment was minor, it was just something that we missed, and we wanted to make sure that it got included in the final plan. So with that, if you have anything to add?
No.
But we're looking for your final vote.
Questions from the board?
Questions like, I'm done, let's be done.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment that I appreciate how you addressed all the comments and how you incorporated the good ones that worked, and answered the people to the ones that didn't seem to really work, or couldn't be timely implemented, so.
We do just want to give a nod to our consultants again. They were so great to work with and so efficient, and they really did a wonderful job. I mean, I can't speak higher than that. I mean, they're unbelievable.
They did a terrific job.
I will say, if I could, the thing I found, it's just really interesting to read, all the facts, the demographics, there's a lot of information. I think the general public might be bored with a lot of our documents, but this one is very interesting.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I missed it, but the first section, and importantly, because we had heard in the past that there's a lot of information in housing production plans, we establish an executive summary. So the very first part of the plan gets right to the point, explains everything that you need to know. If you want to dive into the data, you can certainly do that, but in the first five or six pages, you've learned everything really that the report has to say.
Yeah, but it's very engaging. I thought it was really well done.
Mr. Scott Price and then Mr. Muskele.
You guys did an awesome job.
Thank you.
I was going to say, you said you gave the consultant kudos, but I think really the work that this office has done has been pretty incredible. No, not just him, you as well.
Absolutely.
I think you've done amazing work, and I think you guys are an incredible team. Mr. Muskele?
We'll be back in four years to do it again. It's a five-year plan, we're going to start a year early.
Well, that's, that is going to be one of my questions, and that is, do we get periodic updates from you as to what progress you're making towards these goals, or if we don't? Should we, and is that something we can, you know, ask?
It is part of the housing production plan that the housing coordinator coordinates the updates and all the strategies, so.
How frequently?
Mr. Randshock?
Whenever you want one.
Mr. Randshock, go ahead.
I was going to let Kim finish. So in response to that question, and in addition to what Kim just mentioned, we're just now building that strategic planning software that the board approves. If you all recall, last August, we did a demo. So Peter and I are working on implementing, launching that platform. Every, my goal is, I'm working with the staff and Kim and Jed, obviously, with regards to the housing element of the strategic plan, the number-one, top priority element of the strategic plan. Every three months, so every quarter, we'll come back and give quarterly reports to the board, and across all seven elements of the plan, but because we're here this evening talking about housing, that'll certainly be one of those.
I have one more if I could.
Go ahead.
So with our strategic plan, we revisit every year, and sometimes a couple times or more, but at least once a year to make sure we're updating it. And should we kind of take an approach like that? I know you can't do the whole thing over, but just maybe have an annual summary and just see if there should be any tweaks, or make notes along the way? How do, because we, what we happened last time was, we let it run out, because we weren't really regularly revisiting it.
Well, the strategy, I like how, our other one was huge, and it was to find the information in it, you really had to dig, and having this executive summary in the beginning will be easy to take that out and really keep looking at that, and using it as a tool, as opposed to something we did and sits on a shelf somewhere. And that was the goal, to have that executive summary, so we can pull that out and really utilize it, because for me, it's going to be a tool as well for if there's a, someone's filing a Chapter forty-B, and then they're asking, the ZBA sends referral requests to various departments, and I'm one of them, and I'll use that as a tool to see, does this, you know, each line, does it hit one of our strategies? Does it meet one of our goals? And that's how I'll respond to, so it will be a tool continuously being used, but also the strategies, they have the years in them, but we discussed that, it was hard. It's required by the state to get certified to have years, put priority years on them, but really, if, even if one's in year five, if it happens in year one, we're not going to say, oh, we can't do this because it's in year five. It's going to be a tool we're going to continuously use. And then in the quarterly report, we can add, this was one of our strategies. I mean, recently, I just spoke, I was invited to speak at a conference at one of our local churches, and that was one of the strategies. When they invited me, I'm like, well, this is one of the strategies that we have to reach out to the local community, the churches and nonprofits being one of them. It's not even approved yet, or certified, but I decided to agree to speak because it's one of the strategies. So I think it's just going to be continually being used and looked at. And in year four, we'll start this process again, not year five.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Zalinski?
Thank you both for your hard work. What's the process? If you say you run into something that's not working, how is, can that plan be amended before the end of its term? And if that, if it can, how is that, how does that take place? Is it amendment from here, or through town meeting?
Amendment for the housing production plan?
Right, if you find out that something's not working and you need to adjust it, can that be amended before?
I'm not quite sure we need to really amend it. We just wouldn't use that or carry that strategy or goal forward to the next housing production plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
No.
One final plug, if I may, just because FCT's recording, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that the draft housing production plan is located on the housing webpage, so if anyone has any questions about the plan, they can download it here. You can also view the videos that were provided at the Select Board meeting, any of the documentation from the public meetings that I mentioned, and then, of course, the videos from each event. So by all means, it's all there for you.
Interesting reading.
I would move approval of the housing production plan as presented.
I'll second Mr. Scott Price's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very much.
Woo-hoo! Now if the state certifies it, you'll hear about it right away.
Take the rest of the day off.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation on the East Falmouth Library Project, and I have you slated for ten minutes. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Brian Stokes. I am the interim library director of the Falmouth Public Library. It's my first time meeting a lot of you, so hello, very nice to meet you all. Last week, Linda Collins, the former director of the library, was here to seek approval, to file a letter of intent to apply for a grant, a Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program grant, which is rapidly coming up. The deadline for that is May thirty-first, 2024. We are applying for the grant with the intention of using it to either rehab or construct a new library in East Falmouth, where the East Falmouth Library is right now. Because we want to consider a renovation, requirement of the application process is to engage a building science firm to do a building assessment of the library. And so what I'm here for tonight is to share some of the findings of that with you. Very quickly, just some background, that the East Falmouth Branch Library opened in its present location in July nineteen-seventy-one, and a building that was originally constructed as a private residence circa nineteen-fifty. The present building has served the East Falmouth community admirably for fifty years. The fact that this was built as a private home and has functioned as a library for fifty years is a testament to the excellent construction of the building. But a number of issues over the years have sort of cropped up, including a completely broken HVAC system, as well as a lack of meeting room space in the library as well. And there are significant accessibility issues with the building as well. So, as I said, we engaged Gale Associates to do an assessment of the building, because we wanted to consider how we could possibly renovate it, and part of the requirement of the application for the grant is to do this assessment if we're considering that. So the Board of Library Trustees generously funded a full assessment of the building. That took place in November. We got the report in January. And so the findings that I want to share with you today, this breaks down the findings of the assessment delivered in the final report. The sections of the assessment cover the site and grounds, structural systems, building enclosure, interior finishes, mechanical systems, and accessibility compliance. Each of those sections is divided into repair categories, immediate, which is zero to two years, short-term, two to five years, and then the long-term, which is five to the next fifteen years. So the immediate and short-term timeframes cover essentially what we would be applying for in the grant that we're applying, or we're going to apply for in May. The key takeaway here, so all of the repair work that would need to be done in zero to two years totals about two-point-one million dollars. When you factor in the stuff for the next, the short-term, you add in another five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars as well, which brings it about two-point-six million dollars' worth of work. So the big sort of costs here are highlighted, structural systems, HVAC, accessibility compliance, I'm going to focus on those specifically. So the key repairs that would need to occur in the zero-to-two-year timeframe, a big one is the masonry basement wall. There is a section of the basement wall that is Boeing at present, and so Gale's opinion is that this section of wall, which is about a hundred-and-twenty feet long, would need to be replaced very soon to remedy the Boeing that's currently happening with the wall. This is not an elegant picture of it, but I assure you that is a Boeing wall there. Other key things with the structural system essentially have to do with the bracing of the basement ceiling, the floor above it. This was constructed as a private residence, so it was not constructed to hold massively heavy amounts of books scattered all throughout the building and whatnot. So Gale's opinion basically showed that the current bracing of the, of the ceiling in the basement, the floor above it, is inadequate to support the weight, and will continue to cause structural issues as we move forward. So they recommend significant augmentation in addition of the joists, timber beams, steel beams, and steel columns to increase the capacity of that ceiling. As I said, HVAC, there's not much to say about this. The HVAC system doesn't work, so there's no air conditioning in the building right now. We use window units, which you can see there, to cool the building in the summertime, but as it is, the air conditioning system is completely broken, so I believe the cost that Gale identified for that was around eight-hundred thousand dollars to replace that. So when you consider the structural repairs that need to happen, and then you consider the HVAC repair... the HVAC replacement, that's going to be enough to trigger a requirement for full accessibility compliance, both at the federal level and at the Massachusetts state level as well. So the cost of the accessibility compliance is not as significant as the other two things, but the issue with that is it radically sort of changes the layout of your library. We have two public restrooms at this point, but we would only be able to have one because we would basically have to combine them in order to create enough space for a wheelchair to be able to turn around in that, in that bathroom. The sunken living room, I don't know if anybody here's ever been to the library out there, it's, it's absolutely stunning and has a beautiful view of the pond, but it's a sunken living room with steps down that would have to be replaced with a ramp. And because of the drop being so drastic, you would essentially have a ramp that would extend all the way to the other end. The existing ramp that we have in place already into the children's space is not up to code, so that would have to be replaced and it would have to be evened out. So, and you can see the space where we have our stacks or our books, there's not enough space for that to be considered accessible as well, so we would actually have to remove quite a bit of what we have in there to make that space. So in summary, quite a bit of work that needs to be done here. This was a real eye opener for me and for a lot of the staff that we have working on this, as well as the Board of Library Trustees. The numbers don't lie, that's a good bit of money. So this really drives our thinking that this is a really important grant for us to apply for and hopefully get from the state. And no matter which direction we go in with what happens at the East Falmouth Library, getting that grant will certainly help defer a lot of the costs for the municipality. That's the extent of my presentation. If there's anything else I can answer for you, I'd be happy to.
It's such a neat building, but it doesn't look to me, after reading the Gale report, that there's much that you can salvage there.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be a conversation that we're going to have to have, I think, but you know, it is, it is a really lovely building and I agree.
Mr. Scott Price?
What's the timeline for the grant?
Yeah.
It says it's due in May.
Absolutely. So May 31st is when the application is due. In October, we'll find out whether or not we got it. Pretty much right away after that, we start the building, or the planning and design phase. So that'll extend winter 2025. And then we basically send that off to the state, they review our, our plans, and then we would then have to seek the construction phase, sort of funding from the town. That would happen in spring 2026 with construction happening in summer 2027.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So I understand the timelines, but it seems like especially the Boeing of the basement.
Right. So with the Gale, that was our first question, right? We're like, wait a second, Boeing in the basement, what's going on with that? They said that there's no immediate sort of cause for concern, that we do want to engage with some sort of monitoring system of that Boeing, but that in their opinion, nothing was realistically going to happen that had any sort of life safety implications in the next two years.
Okay.
Great question. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Is the grant contingent on whether or not you do renovation or new construction?
No, sir.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So we, we, what is contingent upon is, is the community need. So a big part of the, of applying for the grant is, is sort of showing how relevant this library is the East Falmouth community. And so I think we'll be able to make a very persuasive case that this is, you know, a central piece of the community and needs to be going forward and that the community really does deserve a state-of-the-art library at the heart of it.
Okay.
Well said.
Mr. Brown, go ahead.
So it looks to me that, I haven't taken the tour, but I'm going to go Thursday, I guess.
Great.
5:30, I think?
Yes.
And my initial response from this is similar to Chair Taylor, that you're probably going to be building a new library. Will you be working on a contingency plan for removing everything and having a temporary site or will you expand ours somewhere else?
Yeah, that's, that's a fair question. Certainly during the planning and design phase, a big part of that will be how do we continue library services in the Village of East Falmouth during a, you know, possible new construction phase as well? Or during renovation with the library closed down as well? It'll absolutely be at the forefront of my thoughts of how we continue to sort of maintain that service in the community because frankly, you know, taking a year off from library service out there would not be something I would advocate for.
Right. I wonder if maybe there might be a space that could be used in the East Falmouth School for temporary? I don't know if that's realistic, but probably need to think of something for a temporary place.
Temporary access.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Does it not look like you're looking for any action at this point, this is the presentation?
Thank you, Brian, for the great presentation.
Very well done.
Just information, just to kind of educate, get the board aware of what's coming.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment, I would like to take a similar approach to the police station and just do the minimum health and safety repairs that are needed for now, just to make this get through, because I don't want to waste too much money on this building.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Approved Recreation Department request to submit an application to the Community Preservation Committee for an amendment to the Bell Tower Tennis Court application, approved at the June 2021 town meeting. Mr. Renshaw, do you have any comment on that? I see we have Mr. Olanek with us.
I am here to join you tonight to help out with any questions you might have. And yeah, it's a time urgent as the project's been delayed quite a while. I'd like to get it moving and unfortunately DPW being so busy, one of the things I was hoping for there, be able to do the design of the handicap access path, which they are not able to do, so they've asked me to outsource it, which is what I've done with some of this money here. And the parking lot is a little bit of a difficult situation. Looks like the fences moved back, so it's a little bit of a drop off from the lot, so we want to touch that up a little bit as we add the ADA parking spaces as well. And some contingency money to make sure we have enough to do the project this time and I have to come back here again.
Questions from the board? Seemed pretty clear cut. But questions?
I don't really have any questions.
Okay.
I would just make a comment for the public that this is just supplementing what we already funded because cost overruns and also now we're adding the path.
Madam Chair, I'd motion to approve the Recreation Department's request to submit an application to the Community Preservation Committee for an amendment to the Bell Tower Tennis Court application in the amount of $82,000.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to get an update on the Cape Light Compact programs and we have, thank you. And we have Matt Patrick. Welcome. Okay, we have scheduled you for 10 minutes, Mr. Patrick.
I should be well within that. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting me and giving me the 10 minutes. My name is Matthew Patrick, I'm your, your representative to the Cape Light Compact. Some of you may remember me as Representative Moonbeam. I was given that name by Howie Carr because I had one of the first hybrid cars that I used to drive up to the State House and bragged about how I could get 60 to 70 miles to the gallon if I stayed within the speed limit. So he thought that was quite funny. He found a lot of other things to make fun of me about, but I, I took pride in that. I thought that was a, a good lesson for the public. The Cape Light Compact's functions, let's see how we can do this. I want, I really want to talk about this briefly, but does everybody know what the Cape Light Compact is? It's a 21 towns, Cape and Vineyard, and we got together to negotiate the terms and provisions of power supply contracts on behalf of all the residents and the businesses in, in the Cape and the islands, well, the Cape and Martha's Vineyard. We've been usually successful in that time. Our electric rates are very high, they've gotten real high, but we are still lower than ever sources rates. Okay? So we, we do negotiate those rates and our rates are lower. We design and implement energy efficiency programs in the territory and some of them have been award-winning. And we also do consumer advocacy on behalf of all of the members in the Cape Light Compact, the Cape and Martha's Vineyard. For example, we saved Cape ratepayers $25 million in 1998 just by participating in a rate case at that time. Okay, now, moving on, any questions up through there? Let's move on then. My goal tonight is to let residents and businesses in our, in our town know about energy efficiency programs. So, okay. So residential programs include free energy assessments that give homeowners free energy-saving devices and a plan for them to save energy in their homes. You can contact 1-800-381-9192 or go to info@capelightcompact.org to get more information. But we have zero interest loans for up to $50,000 for energy efficiency upgrades, 75% to 100% rebates on insulation, $75 per window installation from single pane to Energy Star Energy Efficient Windows. We have rebates on mini splits, which, you know, to give people some idea, that's what we have here. Okay, these are mini splits. We have rebates for oil, propane, and heat pumps, how, hot water heating systems. We have rebates for smart Wi-Fi enabled thermostats, up to $100. We have battery-powered equipment rebates for lawn equipment. And we have up to $1,200 subsidy for electric bicycles for residents who would qualify. And to give you an idea, people, family of two who earned a little bit less than $60,000 would qualify for that rebate. They also have extensive information about going solar. And let's move on to, I'm seeing, you can see I'm not keeping up with it. This is a, this is a heat pump mini split. You're going to be hearing a lot more about them. They're very, very efficient now. They've really made strides in this technology and it, it works in very, very cold weather now. And to give you an idea, these are, these are, you've heard of your oil furnace or your gas furnace having an AFUE, an efficiency rating. None of them get over 100%, okay? The best you will see is maybe 90 to 91%, and that's for gas-fired heating systems. Now, one of these heat pumps are, they're like 300%, 400% efficient. So they're taking a dollar's worth of electricity and they're turning it into $4 worth of heat, okay? So you're only paying a dollar for $4 worth of heat. So these are, these are where the country is going. This is where the world is going. We're going to have to use these things to convert from fossil fuels and electrify our homes and use them for heating. Now, of course, you want to make sure you're well insulated, so we have those programs too. Let's move on to the business. Sorry, I skipped over some stuff, but again, energy efficiency programs for your businesses includes comprehensive assessment and options for saving energy. The Compact technicians will come to Falmouth in June to go door-to-door to businesses on Main Street to offer their services. This is a project we're looking for you to endorse with a town seal for our literature that will be sent out to businesses and what I talked to Mr. Renshaw about earlier. Businesses can apply to the capelightcompact.org/existingbuilding or call 1-800-797-6696. There's going to be a big push for this program. We want to make sure the word gets out. And finally, any questions?
Are you going town by town? Is Falmouth June or?
Falmouth is in June, yeah.
Okay.
And just Falmouth.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Finally, we have a big program for nonprofit organizations and churches. They have to be five years old nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organizations or houses of worship, not exceeding 1.5 million kilowatt hours in, in the prior 12 months. The Compact will cover up to 100% of the cost of recommended upgrades. However, it's only for buildings heating with electric, oil, and propane. Nonprofits interested in this program can download the application form at the capelightcompact.org/existingbuilding or call the same number for businesses, 800-797-6699. And that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Mescalini?
Where's the best place for people to go to get the information, you said, on solar and so, so forth? Just their website?
Yes, or give them a call. Yeah, I, I mean, I can put that number back up.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Could you just remind folks about the advantage for folks that are renting? A lot of people that are renting can get free insulation and all they need is a copy of their lease. Am I correct? Is that?
You know, Doug, I'd like to say yes, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think you are, but I'm sorry.
Homeowners pay a, a percentage of the value.
Yeah.
But I believe renters can get it all done for free as long as they have a lease.
We've gone out of our way to help renters because previously it's hard to get landlords to enter into these programs because they don't see the real benefit for themselves. You know, their tenants are the ones who really benefit.
And they're the ones that are there to answer the door when the technicians come, so it makes sense.
Right, right.
So we got an update. However, the, Mr. Renshaw is making a recommendation. He's requesting that the select board authorize the use of the town logo seal on marketing flyer for the Cape Light Compact's Main Street Initiative Marketing Brochure.
I agree with that.
So if there's anyone who would like to read a motion, that would be great.
Mr. Mescalini, do you want to say something?
Well, I was going to just ask, I mean, will we see the marketing before it goes out with our logo on it?
I can make that happen, sure.
In, in your packet, there's an example, I think it was a Hyannis brochure that Matt let me borrow, but is it included in your packet? So the logo would go on the right-hand side of that, towards the middle of that flyer?
I believe that's this.
So it would be the same flyer?
Same flyer, right, Matt?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, Madam Chair, I'd motion to approve the use of the town logo seal on the marketing flyer of the Cape Light Compact's Main Street Initiative brochure that would be used to market the, the program to Falmouth businesses.
I have a motion?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I would also like to say that if there's anything that we can do to help engage the business community to be aware of this, I would like to do that as well.
Thank you, thank you. That would be great. I, I do have to do better at getting the word out myself, so.
We've got a lot of old buildings on Main Street that could really benefit from this.
I think the Chamber would be that.
The Chamber would be a good option.
Chamber of Commerce. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number five. Approved application filed by Seacrest Concession Air LLC doing business as Seacrest for change of manager of its all alcohol in holder license located 350 Quaker Road, North Falmouth. Are you the applicant?
I am Elizabeth Pisano. I am counsel for the applicant. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elizabeth Pisano from Upton, Cornell, and Devlin. On behalf of the Seacrest Hotel, this is for a change of manager application. With me tonight is Jason Sheldon. He is the proposed manager of record. Jason has over 10 years of experience in the food and beverage industry. He's worked at other hotels, specifically the Omni Hotel. He is familiar with the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol of this board and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And he is a U.S. citizen, and we're happy to answer. Any additional questions that you have?
Any questions from the board?
The only question I have is the ability to be on-site. I noticed you were nice enough to mention the challenge of finding housing. Will you stay at the hotel until you can find a place?
When I, I've been here for two months. I took the job two months ago. So it's, I'm in the process of moving. It might be sped up because while it was raining here this weekend, my wife got two feet of snow in Saratoga Springs, so she might be ready to come now. But it's, I am staying in the hotel currently now, exploring options with re-rentals, a purchase down here as well. But until that is solidified, I do have housing in the hotel, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
And then my, and to be honest, I mean, my mother, I grew up in Hanover, up on the South Shore, so my mother still lives there, so I could make that really horrible commute in the summer if I needed to as well. But no, the plan is to relocate here.
So if she lets your mother, if your mother lets you live there?
That's correct.
Let's not take it for granted.
No, actually, I was at the Equinox Golf Resort and Spa in Manchester for a month and was commuting over from Saratoga Springs.
So the only thing I see is that we're pending fingerprint background check? We're still waiting for that? Is that?
No, that's not correct. I did that in February.
Did it come back? Did the background check come back?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, there was a note in the office file that indicated that the police department had no concerns, just pending the results of the background. So if they came back in February, we're good.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions from the board?
No other questions from me.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the application by Seacrest Concession Air LLC doing business as Seacrest Concession Air for a change of manager located at 350 Quaker Road, North Falmouth as presented.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Locally.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into number six business. Approved application filed by Quixs Hold LLC doing business as Quixs Hold Taqueria for, excuse me, for change of manager of its seasonal all alcohol common victoria license located at 28 Water Street, Unit C, Woods Hole. Hi, welcome.
I'm Amanda Bonoyte, and I'm requesting Quixs Hold Taqueria is, I've never done this before, so.
That's okay, that's okay. You have an application. Any questions from the board on the application?
You have your tip certification, I saw that. Have you done any type of management with liquor license before?
So I've been, yes, in and out of restaurants since I was 16 and mostly in management and currently lodging, but now going back to restaurant as well. So yes, years and years off and on.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I think everything else is in order. Have your question.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the application by Quixs Hold LLC doing business as Quixs Hold's Taqueria for a change of manager located at 28 Water Street, Unit C, Woods Hole as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck with the new job.
All right. Okay, consider and vote to extend the Task Force on Sustainable Living for Falmouth Workforce Families Date of Operation in the Committee Charge. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A bit of background history, town meeting, as you all probably recall. Approved the petition article in June of 2021 to create a task force to seek solutions for the lack of affordable early education and childcare, the need for affordable workforce housing, sustainable living wage jobs, and other issues related to sustaining viability for working families in Falmouth. The Assistant Town Manager convened a group of stakeholders to draft a charge for this task force. The resulting charge was adopted by the Select Board back on February 25th of 2021. Wanted the Select Board to know that subsequent to that adoption by the Select Board, there were three display ads that were purchased at the Falmouth Enterprise seeking volunteers, and the vacancies were properly posted on the committee's page of the town website. A total of two applications were received back in 2021. Madam Chair and Select Board, due to the lack of volunteer interest, the task force was never convened. Dr. Sandra Famon Silva, one of the lead petitioners of the Warren article in 2021, has recently requested through the Town Manager's Office that the task force be re-advertised and believes that there is now renewed interest to serve on such a task force. The original charge called for this temporary, single-purpose task force to be dissolved by August 1st of 2022. Originally contemplated duration was approximately 19 months. Dr. Silva requests that the task force be given five years to complete its work in conversations that she has had with my office. Dr. Silva is also suggesting perhaps a more succinct title this time around, Task Force on Workforce Sustainability. Madam Chair, the Town Manager's Office recommendation that the board adopts the revised charge, which is attached to your packet. The revision includes the requested name change. The revision calls for the task force to be dissolved after a little over two years rather than the five years that was requested by Dr. Famon Silva. The original charge, again, had called for this temporary, single-purpose task force to dissolve after 19 months. I wanted to also note that the Citizens Advisory Committee, aka Task Forces, inevitably require town resources for meeting space, posting meetings, open meeting law guidance, et cetera. And as such, the Town Manager is recommending that the Select Board limit the duration of this task force. And again, we're recommending that two-year period versus the five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Clarification, would it be two years from when, from when we vote this? If we voted this tonight, or two years from when there's a full task force?
There's a date in here. Is there July 1?
Yes, yeah, the date is in the charge, which is included in your packet, which is July.
So that would, the suggestion would be that the board adopt the draft charge as presented, which would have that explicit end date of July 1, 2026?
So even if it takes us six or seven months to get the task force together, it would still end then? So it wouldn't be a complete three years or two years or whatever? Would it be, would it just be that end date?
Correct. That would be the end date. That's proposed end date, yes.
What's the reasoning for the shorter timeframe?
I listed a couple of those reasons. The cost typically, staff time and effort involved in supporting some of the, and we have, I forget how many committees right now, boards and committees, I should know that number by heart.
I think it's 44, but maybe.
I was going to say 46, but probably 44. Sometimes it feels like 40. So that's basically the purpose and the rationale behind limiting it to two years. Just the ongoing support and level of commitment.
And if it needs more time and it gets going, I assume we could extend it at that time?
I believe that's possible.
If it were necessary?
Absolutely, right. The board, and it also speaks to Ms. Scott Price's sort of question slash perhaps concern that, you know, if there's a big delay in getting the task force off the ground, the board could certainly extend that date. And I also just wanted to mention that when this, when the original charge of this task force was adopted, it was sort of a point of emphasis from the board that the idea here wasn't a standing forever committee, that it was really take on the challenge, develop some recommendations, write a report, and finish.
And I think Dr. Famon Silva has indicated that she has interest and believes that this thing could kickstart.
I was just about to say that. I've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Silva, and she has indicated that she's been talking to folks in the community, and she is optimistic that there's enough level of support to get this off and running.
Perhaps a shorter timeframe will get it started moving sooner.
I think it's hugely important for the town to get their arms around this whole issue of workforce, work families, daycare, and so forth.
And they are being asked to bring this to a vote tonight.
I have motion to approve the task force's charge as presented and mission statement. Well, charge, which is the mission statement.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move into number nine. Discuss and vote on a firearm disposal policy. Mr. Renshaw, I have you slated for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I'm going to do, if you mind us pick up from where we left off, is you all recall on February 12th, the Select Board heard an initial presentation from me and kind of a very high-level discussion on the potential to accept public donations for the purpose of counterbalancing or offsetting the loss of the fair market value or trade-in value. I think that's an important piece. And I don't want to use those terms interchangeably, but we typically sometimes hear of trade-in value with regards to surplus firearms to a dealer that the PD is purchasing new replacement firearms. Fair market value, I think, is more accurate. During that discussion, I was directed to conduct some further research on the topic and then report back with a recommended policy. One of the points of discussion was also kind of the mechanism of the vehicle, how this, if the donation concept or model was going to be used, what type of mechanism would be put into place? I spoke with the Finance Department Director and the Town Accountant and asked them to kind of provide an assessment and a recommendation of what accounting structure would be the most efficient and effective and best suited for the purpose. And they both recommended that a donation account be created and that the use of any of the funds donated would be specifically restricted for the purpose of offsetting, again, any financial loss to the town incurred because of the destruction of the surplus property, again, offsetting that fair market value. And I'll state this again, I stated it back on February 12th. It's important to note, the Select Board may not directly solicit private funds for the purpose of offsetting the loss of municipal funds. And also, and importantly, the Select Board is under no obligation to destroy municipal property, even if members of the public should donate funds for that purpose. Madam Chair and Select Board members, the attached draft policy for the disposal of surplus firearms is offered for discussion purposes tonight and a vote of the Select Board, if that is the desire of the board. And if approved, the red line proposed revisions would be incorporated into the policy, the existing policy that the Select Board previously adopted back in May of 2022. And Madam Chair and Board members, you have a copy of the red line version of the proposed policy for the disposal of surplus firearms. And you can see, I believe you can see in your packets, the underscored red line text insertion. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Questions from the board?
I would say, why do we have to have the language that the Select Board is under no obligation? If we encourage the use of this fund and we make it a policy, why would we keep that backup language?
I'm going to ask Town Council to chime in on that, in response to that. Why is it important that we maintain language that the Select Board is under no obligation to destroy the municipal property?
Is that in the, in the policy?
The policy is discretionary at its core for that, for the firearms are in that first category. So that wasn't changed. All that's been altered here is adding an option to provide for a financial offset. So it has preserved the discretionary nature of the decision that the Town Manager gets to make about whether to destroy them in the first place and whether to offset them in the second place.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So the way this is written is, one, the Town Manager has the option to destroy them, just blank, they can just destroy them. And then the second option is, could destroy them and then recoup some of the funds through this, this fund that's set up.
Correct.
So it could do one without the second part.
That's possible.
Okay.
It's broadly written to preserve as much discretion as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just the second new paragraph, starting with the Town Manager and their own discretion, may choose to offset any financial impact with funds donated to the town for this specific purpose, in which event the firearms will be destroyed. Is that, doesn't say that, but that's the intent.
So if funds are taken, are drawn from the donation account, then yes, the firearms would be destroyed. And if, that language can be tightened up if so desired?
Yeah, I think it's just that, I would tighten it up a little bit and just add to that paragraph, in which event the firearms will be destroyed. I do, if I may? I do realize that this is a policy and that it's somewhat flexible and gives the Town Manager some discretion, but I do think it's important to note that when we're talking about the term destroyed, that, you know, we've heard about other towns and what they've done with weapons and that they haven't been destroyed. I don't want to hamstring Mr. Renshaw's actions, but I do think it is important to note that the sense of the community and certainly my intentions, that those weapons that are destroyed will never find their way into other weapons of any sort.
Or pieces thereof. I'm going to let Captain Reed. Captain Reed, can you kind of talk to the, as we envision it currently? We have done a little bit of research in regards to facilities that properly dispose of surplus firearms. And I'm going to turn it over to Captain Reed, I think just recently, the state police?
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Chair, Mr. Muscally, the, we have reached out to the Massachusetts State Police, and they actually destroy the weapons. There's going to be no opportunity for these items to end up back on the market in any form. They're going to be destroyed, and that's going to be at no cost to the town.
One other question with respect to the policy, and I wasn't on the board when it was adopted, but when we speak of otherwise be disposed, we're talking only about resold, right? I mean, there's no other options. Because, because it's, or may otherwise be disposed of in a manner that assures that the surplus firearms will be resold. So it seems to me that when we talk about otherwise disposed of, we're only talking about resold. Is that, am I correct?
So because of the broad discretion in that first paragraph, one of the options the Town Manager still has is to use them as trade-in value. That remains an option. So destroyed or otherwise disposed, that's all that's doing. It's preserving.
But that's, would mean resold, right? If they're traded in, I, I mean.
There's no other way for the town to do that. There's, the town doesn't have an independent firearms license to sell the firearms. That's not a possibility. So the only way to otherwise dispose of them is to trade them in.
It just seems to me, the way it's worded, it says otherwise be disposed, in which event they'll assure that they'll be resold. So it just seems to me that when we're talking about the term otherwise disposed, we're basically meaning, there's no other option other than reselling them, trading them in, slash trading them in, right?
Just trading.
Yes.
It was just trading.
Yeah, that's, that's my point, yeah.
Captain Reed, is there anything else you wanted to say? Did we cut you off?
Not at all.
Okay.
I just wanted to offer that information.
Any other questions about the policy?
So that, to clarify, that would be what we do. If we do destroy the guns, we'd use the state police system of, what do they do? Melt them down, do you know?
Yeah, I haven't been there to witness it myself, but yeah, the guns are absolutely destroyed when the state, we bring them, we personally bring them to the state police for destruction. There's no intermediary, and they take custody of the guns and they're destroyed.
And they don't get traded in or?
No, they're completely unusable.
They don't just destroy the firing pin?
No, they destroy the gun.
That was my question, is there any part of the gun that would be?
No, no part of it. To my understanding, there's no part of the gun that would be eligible or able to be recirculated.
Awesome, thank you.
I kind of like the idea of melting them down and making them with the shovels because there was some group that, I thought that was kind of cool.
Can I ask a question of the Town Manager? So this obviously gives the Town Manager discretion to know what you see is appropriate at the time, either to destroy them or to trade them in, is that correct?
That's correct, it gives, it maintains that discretion.
Okay. And at any point, would you feel the need to bring it to the Board before you made that decision? Or would you make that decision on your own?
So.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, please do.
So because this is founded on the principles of procurement, that, that aspect is solely within the Town Manager's function under the Charter. And so I would want to see that delineation continued on through this policy. I don't see, I think that requiring the Town Manager to report back on that aspect would, would blur a line in the Charter unnecessarily.
So unless we change that language in this policy or made the policy where it would just be one thing or the other, then you wouldn't have the discretion, it would just be, if this policy said they're going to be destroyed, no matter what, whether or not there's this fund, then that would take away the Town Manager's discretion. Is that correct? If we change the policy that way?
If, if you change the policy, how?
If we change the policy to say that.
If I could, if we had a policy that said all retired service weapons will be destroyed, if we just simply said that. But I think what I heard you say was that this Board doesn't really have authority to intervene in professional Town Managers' day-to-day responsibilities.
Procurement responsibilities.
But it becomes onto procurement, that is the key word.
It is, in that, it's confusing here because in almost all municipalities, the Select Board retains the contract approval function of procurement, and that's not the case here in Falmouth, where that has all been vested in the Town Manager. The language in 30B says that the Select Board has to come up with a disposal policy. So what we have here is we're torn between the Charter that has all of this procurement authority in the Town Manager versus the statute that says that the Select Board has to come up with this procurement disposal policy. So what this policy does is it parses that and you, the Select Board, have to create this policy, but because of the Charter, you have to give that authority to the Town Manager to carry through.
So in order to change that, we'd have to change the Charter to take that specific action away from.
All of the, you want to do all of the procurement and contracting?
That would be, that would be the only way to get what, to what.
I think so, this, the, it's been created like this to honor both the statute and the authority that the Select Board has here and to honor the Charter and the Town Manager's responsibilities in terms of procurement.
That's interesting.
Any other questions or comments?
So I think this addition just provides more flexibility for both the Board and the Town Manager and makes it a little more clear. However, I get the point of, there's a certain line we can't cross because of the Charter language. So the Town Manager maintains the responsibility in the final say of what we do. Okay, I guess I understand it now.
Yeah, I don't, I must have misunderstood, or just didn't know the Charter piece to it, that was.
Well, I don't see any language that could improve this, given the constraints that we're working within then.
Go ahead. So this does not say, obviously, it mentions a minimum amount of donations that are in there, so let's just say that there, that there is this fund and $1 is donated to it and you use that $1 to donate, to offset the cost. But because you use the money in that fund, they would then have to be destroyed. Am I understanding that correctly? If you use any of the money in the fund, or would the fund need to cover the, not the trade-in, the market value?
I think it would work the other way, so if the Town Manager decided that, that he was going to destroy the surplus firearms, then he could draw upon whatever funds were available.
Okay.
So I'm sort of looking at it from the other side of the transaction.
Madam Chair, could I?
Please.
I think that's gonna, you know, I think anything that would be able to clarify how the donated funds are going to be used would probably be helpful to folks who might want to consider making a donation. So tell me if I have this right. By making a donation, we can't guarantee that that donation is going to cause weapons to be destroyed. However, if anyone who makes a donation, we can assure that person, those funds will be used for no other purpose other than destroying weapons.
Correct.
Fair?
Yes.
If and when they're destroyed.
Right.
Other than offsetting the cost.
Right.
Right, because we're not actually, if we do the, the State Police route, we actually don't have to pay for them to be destroyed. Is that correct?
No, it would be to offset the loss.
The, the loss.
Yeah.
To offset the loss, right, right.
So whatever the fair market value is.
Trade-in loss, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope. I would make another comment, though. I, I know a lot of folks feel like this is like the will of the town, but I've heard from several people who say, doesn't seem like a big deal to them and they don't like the idea of the town wasting their tax dollars. I'm not saying it's overwhelming a bunch of people, but it's not just a few. Quite a lot of people added these comments, so.
Most recently, I would agree with you, I've read the same thing.
Well, that's all I have.
Anything else from the Board? All right, we are looking for a vote. It's on a policy, would, would you like to say something, Mr. Dubey? Go ahead, I'll give you two minutes.
There are two separate issues right here. One is a, a warrant article wherein we spent more than the article appropriated. The second is the destruction of firearms. I would ask that what I just passed out of Town Council at some point would comment on it, but just let me briefly read from one portion of it. Whenever an appropriation shall have been expended or whenever in the judgment of the Town Accountant, it appears that the liabilities incurred against an appropriation may be in excess of the expended balance thereof. You shall immediately notify the Selectmen and the Board, Committee Head, Department, or Officer Authorized to make expenditures therefrom, and no claim against such appropriation shall be allowed nor any further liability incurred until the town makes provisions for its payment. I'm not gonna bore you or read all the rest of it, that'll be at your leisure. But if you go to the final page, which is from Mass. Department of Revenue Division, Local Services, Guide to Financial Management, The Role of Department Head, if you go to the very last page and hold, it says, once the budget is approved, Department Heads have direct responsibility for ensuring that they spend within the allocated amount. What happened here is a Department Head did not ensure that he was spending, this is not Chief Lorrie, this took place before Chief Lorrie got here. That Department Head didn't check that they were overspending the appropriation. So there was a failure there, and what's happening here is, you're saying to make up for that, what we want you to do, we want the town to contribute to the error that took place by the Department Head under this appropriation. There is nothing anywhere in Mass. General law that I've found, and I spoke to people from the Finance Committee, that covers the setting up of a fund, asking people to donate because the town should appropriate enough money and the Department Head overspent. So how are we supposed to be responsible for the fact that Chief Lorrie didn't monitor what was being spent? Spent more, in the total of, I think, about $2,300, than the appropriation that was approved, and now the town is supposed to make up that $2,300? It has nothing to do with the value of the weapons because there was no trade-in as part of the initial warrant article, no mention of a trade-in. So the value of those weapons was never considered when they asked for an amount to purchase these new shotguns. So how are we suddenly taking this value into consideration? It makes no sense, you're adding it on after the fact. And one last comment, and this is directed at Mr. Zalinski. Mr. Zalinski, you answered my letter to the editor when I asked for what parties were involved by saying, and if you remember, it's people who want things and people who have to pay for them. Well, the people who want these weapons destroyed are the people who paid for them. Town, when we met at a town meeting, there was an overwhelming vote to destroy weapons. So if you're hearing something from people in town that we don't like that concept, they're in the minority, not the majority. Of the 200 and some odd people that were there, well over 200 voted to destroy weapons.
Thank you, Mr. Dubey.
Madam Chair, a question for Town Council.
Sure.
For the first option, motion to approve the policy for the disposal of surplus firearms as presented tonight, is that in line with what the town meeting voted for to give the Town Manager the authority to do what he wanted with them?
Oh, you mean the proposed bylaw that?
Right.
I, I, so it's been a long time since I've looked at that, but I can tell you that the purpose of the proposed bylaw was to codify this policy, to turn this policy into a bylaw. So it was similar, if not along the exact same lines.
Any other discussion amongst the Board?
I would say this is the best we can do for now, and then.
This man would like to say something. I'll give you two minutes.
My name is Tom Stone, I'm on Old Campus Drive. And the, the mission of the Falmouth Police Department is written on their website is to provide high level of safety, security, and service to all members of the community. This brings to mind, to me, two questions I don't expect to be answered tonight, but is trading in used firearms or gun parts, does that increase or decrease public safety? Do more guns in circulation that have been traded in, for instance, does that increase or decrease public safety? I think more guns in circulation decreases public safety, and I would think the Police Department will, may agree with that. And I would also think that trading in used guns decreases public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
If everybody else gives a comment, I'd like to say something.
No. Of course, Mr. Fenner in two minutes, okay?
I've stated it several times here, often not quoted correctly in the newspaper, but the most law-abiding demographic in the United States of America are licensed gun owners. These guns will be sold legally to licensed gun owners. You seem to not recognize the distinction between unlicensed guns and licensed guns. The vast majority of gun crime are committed with unlicensed guns, so this action would have absolutely no effect on that. And honestly, I think that everyone there, not everyone here, should familiarize themselves with FBI crime statistics and you'll see that this is just a waste of money. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fenner. Go ahead.
Good evening. Nan Logan, Precinct 1, Minute and a Half. I have four quick comments regarding the disposition of surplus town firearms. First, I have the question about what we're gonna do with the three short-barrelled shotguns that the Jericks is not interested in, hang on to that. Second, I, I was interested when I figured out that three, the three people who crafted the proposal that you're looking at tonight, that residents pay so the town's surplus firearms are not entered into the stream of commerce, none of those three people was in Falmouth in November 2022 when the question came up at town meeting and it was overwhelmingly voted to destroy town guns. There was absolutely no mention, no concern, no insistence of any contributions of money for those to be destroyed. That demonstrated that destroying surplus town guns without any requirement to contribute financially was and remains clearly, in quotes, harmonious with the will of the residents as, as the Select Board policy mentions. Another thing, there are other towns that destroy town guns that are vastly more financially viable than, than these. In August 2015, the city of Honolulu destroyed $500,000 worth of old police guns instead of selling them. And in June 2016, the Seattle City Council voted unanimously to destroy all unused guns in the, in the Seattle Police Department. We can do the same here. And finally, this is number four, I'm still confused about whether, if we ask people to donate, that we actually destroy the guns. I've heard some sort of, one thing I heard is yes, they would be, and another thing I heard was they might not be because there's still this discretion. I think it's important that we just decide as a town that that's what we're going to do with our weapons when they're no longer useful to us and we're retiring them. So I really, I would like to eliminate this financial bit that we're asking residents to contribute for that and perhaps turn them into garden tools as Doug has mentioned too.
Thank you. Okay.
I wonder how other towns do that.
Can you just forfeit the?
If I may, Madam Chair, none of the examples given were in Massachusetts, so they don't have a procurement laws.
Right.
These are state procurement laws.
Thank you.
I personally do wish there was a way that we could codify saying that these weapons will be destroyed, but if I'm understanding correctly, we don't have, this Board does not have the authority to do that because that would be taking the procurement part away from the Town Manager. Because it's, because it's included in the procurement, and that is where the Town Manager has the authority, we don't have that authority, so.
So are you asking whether you can just take the, take the decision-making away from the Town Manager on that?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. And part of the, part of the reason why I say I, I don't know, and I don't like to say that, because I like to think that I know everything, but part of it is because this is new, this is unique. I don't have, there's no case law on this, there's no guidance from the IG's office aside from, there's a similar situation if you donate patio furniture to a charity. Like, that's as close as they can get to this fact pattern that we have here. The AG's office is constrained by what the IG says, so here, we're just trying to figure it out. Your question is excellent, I couldn't tell you that I could get to it and see if I can find anything more on that particular subject. But what you have before you is really the, the best guess at what we have to do what's, to try to do the best thing and my best guess as to what complies with the law.
And if I could just clarify, it's, I don't really want to take any power away from the Town Manager. I just personally feel strongly about this particular issue and would like to see a way that we could just have that option.
So one, one thing I can say is that we tried with the bylaw, with town meeting, and the AG disapproved it, we could have challenged that. We could have challenged the AG's, AG's disapproval, but in a couple of different ways. You know, the AG was, they were loath to disapprove the bylaw, they didn't want to, but they felt that they had to because of the specific black letter language in Chapter 30B. You know, the disposal of firearms fits right in with the, the AG's take on the economy and their take on trying to be creative about it. Unfortunately, you know, we have parameters that we have to exist within as a municipality, and it's the state statutes, but the state statutes are meant to be challenged under certain circumstances. If it was something that this Board wanted to do, you know, there, just keep trying. Keep trying of other formats, other avenues forward. You know, I'm not afraid of a challenge. The Board shouldn't be either.
Maybe it would be a home rule petition for.
Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
Yeah, and thank you for sending along the AG's decision.
Yeah, um, and thank you for sending along the AG's uh decision with respect to the bylaws. I was not on the board or familiar with it, but, but the AG does say, however, the town may, at the end, in its conclusion, however, the town may wish to discuss, discuss whether there are other options available with town council and the inspector general, in light of the comments above. Could we ask the inspector general?
I, I don't think that that's a constructive route. The inspector general's role is to seek compliance with the statutes as they exist. It is not to, for them to provide um helpful hints on how to obviate the law. That's not what they're there for. You know, here, we do, if, if the, if the goal is gun control, if the goal is to dispose of the weapons and have that be the rule here, um, the law is not on our side. It would take challenging the law as it's written. That's what would need to happen here.
What did you say, Peter?
Sorry, I didn't mean to mumble. The other route, obviously, would be a legislative change.
A legislative change, or maybe a home rule petition.
But the home rule petition, they already struck down.
No.
That was a home rule petition, right?
No, not that kind, like, so what the home.
Different home rule petition.
The home rule petition, well, as opposed to a, a bylaw, would be.
Oh, I see.
A request from the legislature to deviate from the law as it's written.
So we'd have to ask a representative.
Or just to keep, or just to do it and have someone sue us. I, I didn't mean to say that. I don't, I don't want anyone to sue the town. I am not advocating litigation against the town. I just want to be clear on that, Noel.
You'll, you'll be here to defend us.
Okay, I'll take one more comment. Go ahead.
Hello. I'm representative of Precinct Five, but I'm here to talk about what happened in the past and ask a few questions of our council. I was here the night that with select board was faced with room, and standing room only of people who said that they wanted to have the guns destroyed. The Board of Selectmen heard, and I think they probably completely reversed their position. If I'm not mistaken, it, it was a reversal. And then, of course, there was a town meeting vote. And there are 243, I think at this point, town meeting members, and it was an overwhelming vote. But now I want to ask our council, who at the February 12th meeting, mentioned the will of the people a number of times, and I haven't heard that mentioned at all tonight. What does the will of the people mean, Ms. O'Keefe?
I can only answer questions from the select board, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll pose that question to the select board. Do any of you know what the will of the people is?
We certainly have the will of town meeting, and town meeting votes aren't really binding on the town manager. Select board policy, the town manager takes select board policy, policy and takes action and initiatives. Town meeting often votes things to get a sense of town meeting, and it's, in this case, it's useful because we did get a sense, and town meeting did overwhelmingly vote to destroy the weapons. But I don't think that that vote was actually binding on the town manager, if you understand what I mean. I think it's advisory, and it certainly tells us what town meeting wants to do.
Well, I feel, I take the oath that I took very seriously to be a town meeting member. And I feel that the vote and the voice of the people was nullified by the proposal that's put forth by Mr. Renshaw. And I'm really, I, I wish it would not get passed tonight. I wish there were more discussion and perhaps hearing from more people, more voices of the community. Whether that can be done, I know there's a July 1st date which has to be met, if I'm not mistaken. But it is only March.
I don't think it helps us to, if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
It helps us to put this off. This just gives us a little bit more flexibility in case we want to employ this option. It's not taking anything away from us. I agree, it's not ideally what town meeting envisioned, but as you heard from town council, what we, what town meeting didn't pass the muster with the inspector general's office.
And if I, if I understand.
Attorney general, whatever.
I thought it was the inspector general, but anyway. What I would like to ask is about the amendment that changed the policy that was put forth by the select board. Why does that amendment read the way it does? To me, it says that this is like a non-ending thing, that this is something that we're signing on for, not for just this one year and this one disposal of the surplus weapons. But it sounds like we're signing up for the future and asking taxpayers to take money out of their pocket to have something done that they wished had been done and voted to have done.
Let me, keep going. I'm just saying, it just gives us this op, option to do that because we didn't have a clear understanding that we could be within the law by just simply destroying the weapons on advice from the inspector general or inspector general. Inspector general is the procurement advisor.
That's the procurement piece.
So that was the, the limitation, and that's why the language is what it is. And I think you can see that all of us wish it would be a little different, but we have to walk a thin line between what we want and what's legal.
I, I just want to add, it's, New Bedford destroyed the weapons that they got from a buyback, and that was done last year. It was started by a group from UMass Dartmouth, but the weapons have been destroyed.
That's a different thing. That's a buyback from the public. We do that here, too.
Where they destroyed?
Yeah. That was the one where they turned them into garden tools, I think. When it's public stuff, and there's just people trying to turn them in to get a gift certificate or whatever, that's a whole different thing. When you're talking about town municipal funds, we have a fiduciary, a fiduciary responsibility to all the people who don't go to town meeting and don't come to these meetings, and they're too busy working 80 hours a week to live here on Cape Cod, and they only see you in the supermarket and say, you know, give you their opinion, so. That's what, that's what I was mentioning earlier. I, I wasn't trying to say that town meeting, I've heard, I wasn't hearing from town meeting people, just people on the street, people I see at work and so forth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
Dallas AG's office would be my, my pleasure, but I realize that's not the work that I have to do.
I would like to say, yes, at least take this improvement and add it to the policy. Gives it a little more flexibility, gives the town manager a little more discretion, gives the public a chance to weigh in a little more if they want to, and then we'll keep working on it. I'm not saying this is the be-all and end-all, but if we could ask the town council to research a little further, maybe find out if there's some other thing that we're missing, that would be my suggestion.
Do we have to take any action this evening, then?
We have to approve this policy if we want to put it in place.
But if we don't put it in place, what's the downside at this point? The existing policy.
We want to buy these weapons and have an option to.
Mr. Johnson's job? Did you want to say something?
Moving forward.
Sure, I, so the current po, there is a current policy which allows the town manager to acquire the weapons, or the, at his discretion. The only change with this policy is it facilitates a donation um to offset the, the lost value of the trade-in, which might make it um more comfortable and more, arguably more consistent with the procurement law, to take that action.
But even, even if not one dime was donated to that fund, the town manager could still decide on his own, I'm going to destroy those.
Policy.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
And so at some point, we're going to have to make that decision, am I correct? Because we're going to be purchasing new guns. Correct?
That's correct. So we have 26 surplus shotguns that our vendor, our vendor that the police department contracted with offered $4,125 trade-in, fair market value, for those 26 old shotguns. The contract terms say that if the town of Falmouth opts not to utilize that $4,125 in fair market trade-in value, then the total purchase price, 17,000, I forget the exact amount, I don't have the contract in front of me. So there was the option embedded in the invoice, in the, in the contract, I should say, that, look, if Falmouth does not want to entertain trading in the weapons, then the total invoice charge would be, would be due.
Would go up by.
Would be, would, would go up.
Go up by 4,000.
Yes, would, would go up.
Go up 4,125.
And we'd still have to deal with the weapons at that point. You'd have to.
At that point, they would be destroyed, I assume.
I mean, then we have the weapons, they'd have to be destroyed or somehow.
But if that were the decision, I would, I would assume you would send them to the state police through the Falmouth Police.
And we're currently, so this, that option, at no cost to the town, um, in talking to Chief Laurie and Captain Reed, was, we're just, we're currently vetting that. Um, we'll have more information on that, but that would be, it sounds like that is the best path in ensuring that if the, if the decision were to be made by my office to destroy those 26 shotguns, the state police department facility would, would be the, the likely option.
So my, my point is, if we don't do anything, then we're right back to you making the decision.
Yes, under the current, existing policy.
Under the current policy.
Right. This just offers another option.
Another option, that's all it does. It makes the, the policy, it gives him more, more options to look at and consider, whether it's this time or next time. Or, and it isn't, it's, it isn't etched in stone either. Policies can always be amended.
And even if we had a few donations and then we had a shortfall, we could still destroy the weapons and justify the fact that, you know, we have this fund, we're trying to do the best to be responsible with taxpayers' money, the taxpayers who are not here to talk to us.
And when will you, um, when do you have to sign that contract, or when does that contract? What's the drop dead date on that contract to buy these new guns? Do you know?
Captain Reed, do you recall?
Yeah, I, that, I, I believe we're already past that, sir. I think that we've already taken delivery of the new shotguns that were purchased on that contract, so.
So yeah, I believe it was, uh, third week of February was the, the invoice, I'm sorry, the invoice date was February 21st, and it was a net 30, so 30 days, so March 21st was that.
I got it. So you do have wiggle room to make that decision and then pay it.
We would, but in this partic, in this particular.
Some, in matter of fact, I think, in, in the case of the shotguns, I, I don't, I don't know that anything you're going to do tonight is going to have any impact on it.
That's a good way to put it.
There is a looming issue with respect to some other firearms.
There's certainly going to be more, yes, sir, there's certainly more.
In the Cape Cod Times over the weekend.
Yeah, there'll certainly be more firearms upgrades in the coming years, so, yes, what, your decisions are going to impact those, those purchases.
Are you looking for a motion, Madam Chair?
I am.
I, I'd make a motion to approve the policy for the disposal of surplus firearms as initially presented by town manager. Give me a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can we also?
Mr. Muscally?
I'm abstaining.
You're going to abstain, you're not going to, okay, so we have four to pass the policy, one abstention. And when will you, or will you be updating the board as you move forward, Mr. Renshaw, with, as you move forward, as the guns, the transaction, people?
So with respect to the 26 shotguns that I've just, so I don't know if there's a requirement that I report back the, uh, under that, under that procurement, is there more? Can you?
So there's no requirement.
Okay.
So, so I, I, it's my desire to be as transparent as, as, as possible, and, uh, and one of the things I think this new policy, if it, if it is approved tonight, um, does allow is the, uh, with, within 30 days, there's a, there's a 30-day window that we advert, not advertise, we post, um, the surplus weapons. I'm not sure, to be quite honest with you, what, perhaps it was an open records request, how the information with, with regards to these 26 was initially obtained. Under this policy, town manager's office posts that information on the town website, so it's very transparent in terms of the fair market value, what that potential financial loss or impact would be to the town. Um, and it's my belief that that 30-day period would allow, again, if this policy amendment were to be approved, would allow the community, although we can solicit, you know, would not solicit donations, would allow the community to, um, to at least be aware of that, of that, of that delta, that difference between whether it's the fair market value of the, of the surplus firearms. So I'm hoping that that kind of serves as that catalyst and that kind of increased transparency. But I, I don't have any plans currently, Madam Chair, to, to, on a, on a annual basis, uh, report back. I don't think there's anything that would require it.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, I think I may have misunderstood your question, Mr. Renshaw, about the reporting. There is, in this newly adopted policy, there's one reporting requirement to the select board, and it's just, um, what the fair market value of the proposed surplus is. And that, that's in here, so for transparency purposes, because there was a question mark about when people would know what to donate and how much to donate, if they wanted their funds to be considered. So in order for people to know what that dollar amount is, there's two provisions in the new policy. One, that the, the fair market value will be posted on the website, and two, that the town manager report that value to the select board. So the only reporting requirement back from the town manager to the select board is when they're deemed surplus and what the value is.
That number is.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
If someone wants to know what the balance is in the account, perhaps to say, to add a donation to it, to bring it up to whatever the fair market value is, how would they go about finding out what the balance in the account is?
I, I don't know.
They could request it from the town manager's office or the finance department.
Okay, thank you.
It's not as fun as a GoFundMe, huh?
Okay, we're going to move on to the discuss to vote, because we just voted that, we did a four to one.
You did, yes.
Okay. Discuss and vote to approve the resolution in support of higher education. You have that in your packets, and it is connected to the cherish. Bill, does anyone have any questions on that?
You know, I thought it was a good thing to do.
Okay.
I had some questions as I started reading it, and as I got to the end, I had most of them answered.
Madam Chair, I had motion to approve the resolution in support of higher education for all as presented, and to send a copy of the resolution to our legislative delegation.
Okay, I have a motion.
You had an open motion. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please make sure you sign it before you leave tonight. Folks, we need to continue. Are we ready to continue? Okay, we have a presentation from the municipal light board, and I'm going to hold you to 10 minutes.
Yeah, I will try and do it quicker than that because I have a presentation at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning, so.
Good for you.
First, and realize I was going to clear the room by being the next up, but I will, I will do my best to hold up my end of the bargain, so. First, and I think the presentation was sent.
It's Sasha Lander.
And just introduce yourself as, please.
Yeah, I'm just trying to free up the technology pot first.
We can do that for you.
Okay, all right, thanks. It's what, acting chair of the municipal light plant board, um, also a town meeting resident, uh, member, and in Precinct Three.
Do you have some keyboards?
Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Pierre.
And you can use the arrows.
Just the arrows?
Yeah.
Up, down, or up?
Down, to the left.
Okay, thanks. Hope I, hope I don't have to go backwards at all, so. First, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. I apologize for the presentation getting over late. I was working on some other stuff all week, and it, it, all of a sudden was Sunday, so. I did drop off a hard copy of the presentation to the, um, town manager's office to be given to each of you tonight, and also emailed it, um, this morning, so. I will get, I will get right into it. So, um, the, I have fellow members of the municipal board that are here tonight, Jim Newman and, um, Bunny Bird. Scott was attempting to get back from the snow up north, not sure if he made it, and we have, um, one vacancy. Sam left the board a month ago, and we appreciated his service over the first 10 months. So I included a quote, straight from the feasibility study, and just, it's, it's really more of just a thinking point. You know, one. You know, one of the things as we go forward, and we continued in this process, and we utilized, is, you know, what is the assessment of the local government's ability to participate in all of these different operating, um, opportunities for a municipal, for, for a municipal broadband fiber network? So, I included it here, and, and just, it's more of a food for thought, um, piece of the presentation. So just to give you a little bit of the timeline of what we were working off of, and, you know, we've been in existence for about 10 months, all elected last, uh, last May. We established our mission statement, and, you know, when we established the mission statement, I think we, um, I thought was, as the establishment of this, that it was all gonna be about building our own network here. And we were a little bit surprised when we went out to the RFI and, and, and looked for input, so we could build a business plan. I think the intention was, in our first year, to was really get a solid business plan built on what it meant. But in order to get that, to that point, into that solid business plan, we, we said, well, what are the dissing, different concepts that would be out there, because the plan's gonna be different, depending on what you do? So we created an RFI process, and released it in August. We got numerous responses in our September timeframe, and here's a list of, of the sponsors, Bonfire, Tilson, which later became the boundless presentation that we'll talk about, Whip City Fiber, Go Net Speed, MC Fiber, even Comcast responded in a way, they didn't wanna meet with us, but they did send in a response, and we had some open dialogue with, with Open Cape. We met with all of the respondents in, uh, the last quarter of 2023, and we gave it up, a quick update to town meeting, uh, at the November town meeting. And at that town meeting, we, we presented this slide, which showed the five different ownership, uh, potential structures. And going through those RFIs, and you'll see from, as we get into the presentation, there were three of the, three of the options that came back to us, examples that we had through this RFI process. First being a municipally-owned option, which came in from Whip City Fiber. Whip City Fiber is an offshoot of, um, Westfield Gas and Electric, out in the western part of the state, where they built numerous networks, um, through, uh, funding from the federal government, in those rural areas where there was no, there was no contest, there was no competitor. They built networks and they operate them. So they are the, the, um, the trucks on the street, they, they run this through their, the Westfield Gas and Electric, so they are truly the operator. And this model would be a model that the town would fully fund the project, build out the project, the estimated cost that, that they shared with us was about $73 million. So that's what the initial bond would. And this would be a process over a five to seven years, depending on how quickly you wanna build out, um, the network. With that, they, the, they would be our operator, we would control it, the town would most likely have to set up some type of structural department, uh, that this would fall under, but you would pay a fee to them to be your operator and, and maintain your network. So based on, uh, figures that they provided, roughly, the average cost for a gig service would be about $85 a month. And in comparison, roughly, through Comcast today, for a gig of service, you pay 110 to about $120 a month. So, you know, it's, it's a substantial savings, and then, you know, the, the town takes the risks, funds the project out, uh, but garners the revenue that goes along with it. The second option that we, that came in was a public-private option from Bonfire. It's a somewhat unproven rationale here in this, in this marketplace. It talks about utilizing revenue bonds. I had a conversation with the finance director about revenue bonds, and revenue bonds are very risky. There is not a lot of, um, you, it, it's a long process to utilize revenue bonds, because you, at first, you have no revenue. So you, it would be underwritten, it's about, they're not looking for the full build-out, it's about a 25, 30 million dollars with a long payout timeframe, but the first three years, there is no revenue. So, it's a much more difficult process than just bonding out yourself. The average cost, um, at, at the street to buy the fiber once, once it's in, for the, for the resident in town, would be roughly the same as the 85 to 90 dollars, and that's what this model is based off of. And then the last would be a, uh, private equity option. This is what, this is the one that really precipitated the, the letter that we sent to the select board, I'd say it's probably about a month ago now, um, to talk about boundless. Boundless is, is a private equity, they, uh, they've been presenting, uh, around the Cape already, they were at the, um, Cape Cod, I want to get the name right, the Cape Cod Tech Council, uh, last week. They are, uh, they've been talking to the Cape Cod Commission, they've been in discussions with Open Cape, but this is a private equity model. And the commitment that they have made is, there will be no investment from the town other than resources and whatever can be negotiated by the town, but it's a private equity deal that they would invest $46 million to build fiber to every home in Falmouth. And their commitment is that, we questioned the timeline, but they have a commitment of 18 months, and in fact, I learned new, sitting in the Cape Cod Tech Council, that they have a plan to fiber the entire Cape in three years. And that's 100% of the Cape. So, it, it sounds great, but as everything, devils are in the details. Um, so, you know, we think that, that, uh, the town needs to be open to having that discussion with them. I know they've reached out to the town manager to have discussions, and, and he's been waiting for this meeting, for us to present to you guys and have some open discussion, and, um, so, so we could move forward on that. So, so those are the three main options that, that we went through, and we met with all of the groups. Go Net Speed was another, they've been attempting to come into Massachusetts for a long time now. Um, but the, the only, you know, and, and, we've done a lot of research, you know, we, a lot of homework was done for a group of five people who got thrown together into this about 10 months ago, coming from a lot of varying different backgrounds, to, to come up with and get to the point that we're at today. And in Massachusetts, you know, we've had a lot of companies come from outside of Massachusetts who don't have any ideas how it really works here. The only successful, and they, and they've all struggled here in Massachusetts, have been those who have current electric or gas utilities that already have a revenue to build the network. The example I use is from my hometown where I grew up, is the city of Taunton has had a very successful municipal light plant. They are one of the lowest-cost electric utilities here in Massachusetts. 20 years ago, they started their, their, to build a fiber network, and they have competition from both Comcast and Verizon. And over the last 20 years, they've been able to provide fiber to the home in less than 15% of the homes in the city of Taun. So it gets really hard, even when you have your own revenue stream and your own electric company, to build a network such as this and get it, you know, across the entire community. So, I share that as, as a personal example, because my dad was involved in that, going back 20, 25 years, at the beginning of that program, so. So, what, what are our requests? So, we are asking for the town to commit to dialogue with Boundless, to explore how the installation could benefit the town, and what Boundless would ask for in return. I think that's what our letter tried to precipitate, uh, about a month ago. We're looking for the MLP authority to proceed with that discussion, because as we look at this, the private option really fall, a lot of the private option falls outside of what the, um, expectation of the MLP was, when it was formed and when it was established. We're requesting the select board to designate the town manager or his designee to support the MLP in this discussions, so we can have, because there will be, the discussions will really affect, um, the town in a more general sense. Things like, uh, asking this provider if they come in, will they structurally upgrade all of the fiber in the town buildings? How will it work with the schools, with upgrading fiber in our, in our governmental buildings? Those are things that are really all outside of the ability of, of the MLP. Identify the town manager or his designee as the lead for the town and negotiate, and responsible for dialogue and negotiation. We need, we just want someone that can have that back and forth, and if it, if, if the select board so chooses not to, um, have the MLP do it, I think the town needs to, um, take on discussions with Boundless, because it's really outside of what we can do, and they do wanna come here. So I think they are expecting a response from the town after this, uh, discussion with the select board, from what they've communicated. They respected the process, because they, if you look at it, based on them being just another telecom, similar with Comcast, they could have come directly to the town, but they respected the process that we set up here in town, that the fiber optic and the, and the RFI was put out by the MLP, so they came to the MLP first. Um, and then, there, in any negotiation, and everything that we've tried to discuss, there's gonna be some legal and consulting fees. And at this point, the, the MLP has no funding. FalmouthNet has fundings, but that is not funding for the MLP. The, the rest of, uh, the packet is what, just appendix, giving you some highlights of, um, different, uh, portions that came out of the feasibility study, as well as some breakdowns, some pros and cons of the three different models. So, I open it up for questions of us, any of us.
From the board, Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Schwartz, I'm.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, um, I have to be honest with you, I'm a little disappointed with the, uh, the characterization of being five members being thrown into this. You guys were elected, right? I'm sure your constituents would be disappointed with that.
Yeah, that, maybe a bad, maybe a bad choice of words.
Um, so, that, going forward, um, I, I felt like that, that had to be, so you might wanna, you might wanna back up from that.
Yeah, that's fine. Bad, bad choice of words, that's fine.
Um, if I had to ask you one question, what would be your next, as, as your, your elected body? What's your next move? If you had your choice, what would be the next step you took?
I think it would be to sit down and negotiate with Boundless what they could do, so we can get some hard facts of what they plan on doing for the town.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions?
I'll let others go first, I've been pretty familiar with this. Would you lead the discussion? Okay, well, I would say that I've been hopeful that we would find a partner where the town could be a limited investor, somewhere between maybe 25 and 50%, so that we'd have a stake in it, because I'm a little concerned about having another private network. It's great to have two, and it's great to have fiber, and I've been hopeful that we would find a model that would allow for the town to be a partner and a part owner, so that if the whole venture doesn't work out, we can salvage what's left and, and carry on. But this is, as Mr. Schwartz said, this is an offer that we weren't expecting, and so it seems like it would be maybe not wise to not explore it directly with this company that's privately funded. If you look at the numbers, it's the lowest cost, because they're, they're not waiting for decisions from the town, they're just gonna move forward. The, the price of the internet is the lowest that's been proposed.
I don't think I mentioned that, I mentioned it on the other two, their proposal, and that's across the Cape, is $55, and that's committed for five years, for one gig, half of what you would pay from Comcast.
So, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, the economic benefit to the town having this fiber, the number of jobs that we could bring in, because I know people that work at HOE, and they used to go all week, try to get their work done, so that they could try to start uploading it on Friday, in the hopes that when they come back to work on Monday, the upload was complete. Now they do their work at their leisure, because they have the fiber, and they can upload anytime, and it's two or three hours instead of two or three days. So we could bring in people from movie industries, and who knows what, that I'm not thinking of. They could do editing, upload their work, which they can't do here now. And one of the members of the, uh, FalmouthNet, Merrill O. Snowman, was a great example. She couldn't do her work in Falmouth, she had to go to another town where she had an office or something, or where her work was, because her work required massive uploads. So the financial benefit, I think, outweighs the, my dream of wanting to have a municipal network, so I would have to say that this just seems too good to, to turn down, so I would suggest that we do investigate what this company would be willing to commit to the town, and I think that they gave, the, uh, municipal light plant board gave us a lot of information via email, with a lot of bullet points of what to look for, and I don't know if it should be a partnership between professional staff with the MLP to, to have another meeting or two with these people, and all work together to, to craft what might be a contract.
And that's where I think it gets confusing, because I think I would have agreed with you at one point, but I think the way the MLP was set up was that they do have the authority to do the negotiation. And one of the things that you did say is some, at, at some point, it would become a town department or something, I heard you say that.
Well, if, if we went the municipal road of creating our own municipal fiber internet, this, this is no different.
Right, no, I, I understand that piece, but it, I don't think, the way it was set up, it would ever become a town department. Am I wrong about that?
So for any of these options to be viable, would have to be a town department, but that was never part of the arrangement.
That's, that's where it gets really confusing, because that's what I thought as well, it wouldn't be a town department.
But if.
The town, you could certainly do that, that is something that can be done.
We could, we could, okay.
But that's a huge undertaking, that's, you know, that would have to be considered, that, that might be one of the only ways that, that these models are successful, is for the town to do it, because the MLP doesn't have any funding. They don't have any, they don't have any resources, they don't have any income, there's no revenue stream, so they're hampered at every, every turn, but they're not part of the town. So, there's no way for them to get resources or revenues, um, without a huge influx of cash from the town, and we can't give it to them. It would have to be either in return for services, but that's putting the cart before the horse, because they don't have any services to provide that we can pay them for, or it would just have to be a decision that the town makes with town meeting to appropriate the $80 million that it takes to get this standing up.
So, so does, but the MLP can negotiate.
They are, they're own entity. The town can't negotiate on behalf of the entity. That's why I say the only way that the town can negotiate here is if there was a decision to make a department of the town.
Madam Chair, may I? May I follow up on that? So, I understand, under any scenario where the municipal light plant is going to be, um, overseeing a cable operation, they're an independent entity, um, but in this boundless option, there is no municipal control over the operation, there is no municipal role in the operation. The only role of the municipality, as I understand it, and I'm, I haven't been a party to any of these, any of this direct dialogue, I haven't read the background documentation, but just, big picture, my understanding is, this would be like Comcast.
Correct.
Right? So, we have a cable franchise agreement with Comcast, only because they're a cable provider, um, with an, with the fiber only, I don't know that, I'm not sure whether we would have a contract with them or not, but the point is, whether or not we have a contract, the town has a contract with Boundless, there isn't any sort of ongoing operation that municipal light plant or a town department would be involved in. They would be, you know, they would be like Eversource, N-Star, they would be like Comcast, they would be a private entity doing their thing. Now, there's, there's a lot of interaction with the town to build out the network.
Correct.
So that's, that's a dialogue that needs to happen in terms of grant of locations, and, you know, approval process, and.
And we have that process, so.
Details.
Already, there is a process for that.
There is.
And if, if I may, Madam Chairman, that, that is what we have been struggling with for the last three months, after we received this proposal from Boundless, because Peter, you're spot on with exactly what you, how you just positioned it. That's what we've struggled with for the last three months in coming up with. How, how do we move forward? This wasn't what we expected as a proposal when we got these RFIs backed in, so. I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ed, for the work that you guys have done. I mean, you've done a lot of work in a very short period of time, and I think we all appreciate it, but how does Boundless fit within the mission of the MLP, which you state to be locally controlled? I mean, how, there's a contradiction there.
There is, there is, and, and we've had some discussion about this, that, there was a lot of discussion when we put that right in the mission, and that, I think, I speak for myself, if we were to go back and rewrite our mission, it may have taken those two words out of it. Because at the end of the day, what, when I got into this, and, and. Because at the end of the day, what, when I got into this, and one of the reasons I ran basically is a quote that leads on the front page of the Falmouth Net site, and I'll read it to you, it says, "Working to bring fast, reliable, and affordable internet access to our community." That's how, what I personally got into this for, and you know, I think, it may have even you Doug earlier that talked about, and Nancy you followed up, on the gun issue where you're hearing some different things in the community, the one thing, and I think we can all speak to it, and the member who's not here brought it up at our last meeting, the number one thing that we hear coming to our board all the time is, great, competition for Comcast. That's the number one thing that the community is looking for in a new internet, fiber internet system in our community, is to bring competition to Comcast. And at this point, this brings us the best opportunity for that.
Go ahead. This may be a ridiculous question, but I feel like I'm missing something.
Oh, I miss a lot, so don't feel like anything's ridiculous.
So Falmouth wants to come in and put fiber in Falmouth?
Yes.
They can do that without having any conversation with us?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
So what is, what is the ask? That we have conversation with them?
Yeah, we have conversation with them, because I know they've reached out to the town manager, and he's awaited for us because to clear up some of the confusion that goes along with the MLP, because of what our mission and what was set up at town meeting, that's why we sent that letter to start that dialogue.
Can I say something to that? Can I?
Go ahead.
So to be clear, I received an email from Mr. Schwartz copying a representative with Falmouth introducing me, and I was very clear back, appreciated the contact, but I take direction from the five select board members, not the members of the MLP respectfully.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So that's why we're here tonight.
And that's part of the reason why we sent that letter about a month ago was for that.
But let's go back to Ms. Scott Price's question, what is the ask? If they can come in and do what they want anyway, that's what I understand, what is it that they want to negotiate, I guess is my question.
Well, I think they're open to negotiate because they want to be a good partner in town. That's really what it is.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So they don't just want to come to Falmouth, they want to do the whole Cape, and who knows probably a lot more. They see a lot of progress in Falmouth, and they see a good start to a broader network. So I think that they want to partner with Falmouth to be really successful, so that the rest of the Cape says, wow, look what's happening in Falmouth, we got to get some of that.
When you say, what's the partnership look like?
The partnership would be, they're going to need some properties, they're going to need help with some DPW and advocating from the select board to get the trees cleared, to run the cable lines, it's a lot of things we can do to be helpful partners.
But so it's the same as Eversource?
Right.
Similar to what Eversource asks us?
But new.
I'm just trying to understand.
But it's new with new problems, because Eversource doesn't have to string lines on every single pole in town, most of their stuff's up, they just have to repair it. This is a whole new thing, where we're going to bring new lines on every pole, a lot of the trees are overgrown, a lot of the maintenance tree work is maybe a little behind, so there's going to be some advocacy needed by the select board to get up to speed with our roadways and our infrastructure to accommodate the work.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Does this remove you from the board, from existence if they come in like, because there would be, forgive me for saying this, but what would you, what would you do? If Comcast comes in without you, and they come in just like Comcast, there would be no need for you?
They've acknowledged that.
We've acknowledged that, yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to fit, I'm trying to go off of what she, you know, what is the ask here?
Right, well, the ask is, do we want to, because they're recognizing that this doesn't fit their mission. So if we're going to go with this privately funded company that could come to town on their own without asking, but yet they're asked, they are asking because they do want a partnership, there's a lot we could probably gain by being, you know, cooperative partners in this.
So what's the ask? We ask, we direct our town manager to enter into negotiations or preliminary conceptual negotiations with them, is that what this is about?
I think that would be one way to do it, or we could ask Municipal Light Plant Board to iron out some more details, because they're more in tune with it, but we've got a pretty good sense of what is before us right now.
I do see that on the presentation that we have, and I think it was also on one of your slides, that one of the requests is to provide MLP authority to proceed with discussions regarding a private option.
Yeah, and that was because we actually have developed some tentative memorandum of understanding questions that we had developed as part of this, but that's really at the discretion of your board to allow us that authority, we don't have that authority.
I thought they did have that authority.
You can't grant them authority for anything, they're independent of the town and have authority to do whatever they want.
That was my understanding.
I don't think I can be more clear.
Okay, then that...
It doesn't have to be a granting of authority, maybe it's more of a cooperative request. If we don't feel like we have enough information, and we need a little more clarity, we can ask them to come back and say, what is it exactly we should be asking for if we don't feel like we're qualified to ask? But we do have the bullet points that are pretty clear of what we should be looking for.
Go ahead. So is the, so we can't tell them to do anything, because, but we could cooperate.
We've heard a conversation.
We're having this conversation to say, the town manager has a lot on his plate, it would be great if the MLP did a bunch of talking with Falmouth and having conversations, and then come back to us with some more information, at which point then we could move forward with that if we wanted to.
Without making any negotiations, because ultimately it would be, their deal would be with us then.
Yes.
What, what deal? I don't really understand.
Well, I mean, as Doug described, if they came in, don't forget, they'd have to use all of our infrastructure to string their lines and all of that like Comcast would, right?
Regular permitting.
Yeah, we don't really, we...
Well, that's what I'm saying, but they still have to interact, as Peter had discussed with us at some point.
Well, let's don't go to conversation.
Funktual...
But I don't think that, so the MLP has the authority to negotiate in order to reach this goal, right? I don't think, I think the two processes can, MLP negotiates with Falmouth or any other entity, because it has the authority now, and then the product, the fruit of that, the result of that negotiation, then we currently have a permitting process in place at the town, like any other utility, that, you know, following the negotiations with the MLP. What I feel uncomfortable with is I think I'm being asked to be the negotiator, and I think that the MLP has that authority, to negotiate entered contracts with a provider, and then, once those are complete, whatever the result of that, then they can come to the town and talk about permitting.
So these should be comes for us? We, none of us are as much of a great negotiator in the industry that I work in, I don't believe that there is any one of us on the board that has the legal capacity to negotiate a contract, that we will need someone who is versed in, similar to the negotiation, the attorney high to negotiate with Comcast, that we don't have any funding to provide or any way of doing that, because we don't have any funding.
The way you're organized, Chapter 164.
Yeah, we have no, we have no funding for that. So that is what, that's what we're up against, and we could sit down and draft out something with them, but it's not, there may be legalities to it that, or people who are in the industry that negotiate those types of contracts, that we would look for expertise.
Jim Newman, I'm the clerk of the MLP. I also think it's very important, just to add on to what Ed is saying, that the quid pro quo that Falmouth is looking for mostly pertains to things that the town controls. So it's access to permitting, it's potentially use of some town-owned property, things that we have absolutely no authority to make any commitments for. So that's, to me, that's the crux of the relationship that we need to figure out, that the town, that somebody from the town needs to be making those kinds of...
Isn't that part of the process, just like with any other?
Sure, if a utility company needs an easement from the town, then there's a process to do that.
Exactly, so they would come like anybody else and file, and I know the permits...
Do they do that through the town manager's office, or do they go?
Building Department.
Building Department.
So I just wanted, if the town had not established an MLP a year and a half ago, and this did not exist, a group like this would be coming directly to the select board, they would not be coming to an MLP. My opinion, and this is me speaking, probably eliminating what we've done on the MLP, but really, their presentation should be to you on what their requests are for the town and through the town manager, and make those determinations. If you want to, similar to a cable commission, assign a role to, we're being told we can't, but I would say, similar to a cable commission, the MLP could do that, but a cable commission has the ability of town funding to get legal advice in negotiating what the deal with Comcast would be, so I, it's kind of, it's kind of a half in, half out.
A gray area, because it's not been done before yet.
Just to clarify.
Hold on, I'll go to, wait a minute, Mr. Zansky, then I'll go over to Mr. Skalik.
So, so in essence, you would have to dissolve, I mean, you guys were elected to handle this, correct?
Well...
And now you're saying you can't handle it, you don't have the money, and you're just in the way, kind of?
Of this, of this particular one, of this particular one.
Okay, so there would have to be some dissolution of your board in order for this to go through, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, no, not necessarily. If this proposal...
The town voted for you to take care of this, right?
No, 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 the chapter, the way the town voted, setting up Chapter 164, does not, does not give us that authority to do what this is asking for as a telecom utility. It does not. 164 is to build your own utility, to build your own utility. I, unless we have funding, we don't have the ability to do this, and if we didn't, weren't in existence, this would fall to the town. This would fall to the town.
But it would fall to the, but it would fall to the town only in the sense that they'd filed their permits, they'd asked for certain easements, how else, I'm trying to understand, how else would it fall to the town?
Well, if the town wanted to negotiate for some kind of revenue to come back to the town to do any portions of those things, similar to the way that it's negotiated with Comcast.
Right. I know you're waiting, go ahead.
No, I guess I'm just, what's happening to these other options that are out there that I think need to be explored, and that's what my concern is going forward, you know, there are two other possible options that I think need to be explored, and to clarify, I think what you were saying, that when you said cable commission, I think you may be referring to like the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Yeah, exactly.
That had been in existence and which negotiated the renewal of the lease with Comcast. Some committee structures such as that, having that, the ability to look into these other possibilities. You would have the possibility of doing one of the other options, your board.
That is correct, that is correct.
So it's this, this particular, so you're basically almost recommending yourself out of existence almost.
But if, but if this falls through, we want to still keep working through those other options that at some point may become viable, but at this point, this is the option that's on the table.
Right.
Well, there are two other options on the table, you may not have think much of them, but there are two other options.
Right, right, just to be clear.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So in a nutshell, if we want them to, if we don't like this idea, and we want to continue with the dream of having our own municipal light board, and having town meetings fund the construction of a network, and explore the other options, we could tell them right now, that's what we want to support. We could say, please continue to investigate the other options, let's look away from this offer to come to privately fund a network in town, and then they would own it, which is fine, because they paid for it, but, so this is what we're faced with the question here today. If we want to go with this option right here, we don't need the Municipal Light Board to do it, because it's outside of their realm, pretty much, and this company...
They don't take their direction from us, though.
No, they don't, but what I'm saying is...
Then what are you saying? We can't tell them to do anything?
What I'm saying is, we're not, we're not telling them. What I'm explaining is, there's two different options. Either we continue with the municipally-owned municipal light board, and we go with the other options, back up a few pages, or we think about whether or not we want to just let this private company come into town and try to partner with them. We could just let them say, hey, go to the building department, you're on your own. Or we could say, hey, come on in, let's work together, let's see if we can get some infrastructure in our schools, upgrade our connections to town hall, maybe there's some things that they can do as a partnership with us that we might be missing an opportunity. So that's, I think, what we have to decide here.
And keeping all three, three things on the table, you don't think that that will convolute the whole thing and alienate maybe what our best option would be for them to come in on their own?
Let me go, let me get to Mr. Skalik.
Just, I think the one thing that hasn't been said here, and one of the major concerns about Falmouth is what happens in five years, and what's the protection the town's going to have at that point? So we can kick this down the road, we can go with Falmouth, five years down the road, we've lost, you know, we don't know what's going to come in, whereas now, we at least have the option of exploring some other possibilities, which, you know, that have been brought to them, that, you know, would not put us necessarily in that place five years down the road. I think that's the, that's the real concern that most people have, I think, with the private option.
Actually, Courtney Byrd has had his hand up, so I, do you want to come up for a minute?
While he walks up, just to answer that question, just as an FYI, Bonfire is also going to be presenting to the Cape Cod Technology Commission, so the other options have not, like, scattered because this option is on the table, that's still there.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm Courtney Byrd, I live on Sipwist Road, and I'm a member of the Municipal Light Board and a few other things. It's been a long journey for me personally, because we, I was one of the founders of Falmouth Net, and our dream was to create a municipally-owned and managed network. And that was the dream, it became part of our mission statement for the Municipal Light Board. And then this came along. Chapter 164 is very broad, it's the authority that creates or creates the Municipal Light Board. And I guess if you interpret the Chapter 164 extremely broadly, you could say that what we, this Falmouth thing falls within our jurisdiction, and so on. However, because we're not putting any skin in the game, we, meaning the town, we felt that we had to bring, we had to bring board of selectmen, town manager, and so forth into it. You certainly can turn around and redelegate these responsibilities back to us, we need to have that kind of authority. As far as the Falmouth option, I've heard the issue of what happens in five years if they decide as being financed by venture capital that they want to sell out, and so we end up with Comcast 2.0, or Cox Communication, or something along that line. Well, they're still a competitor to Comcast, so there's that. I think where we are right now is that, my suggestion would be that the, the board of selectmen, and work, essentially delegate back to this board, our board, to do a lot of the nuts and bolts of the negotiation with Falmouth. However, there are town commitments, such as, you know, rights of way, and, you know, digging up the streets where they want to run cable, that kind of stuff, police details, all the, most of which are routine stuff that you, you do all the time. We submitted to you as a side document, a list of potential issues that could be negotiated with the municipal, with Falmouth, or with any other private ISP that might show up. And if you read that document, which was part of your package, you'll see that there are a number of items in there that, on the town side of it, that are pretty routine. We could certainly, we would be willing to negotiate the, a lot of the details with Falmouth or whoever, but I think from the standpoint of making commitments on the town, we would need, we would need to have the town involved, whether it's the town manager or a member of the board of selectmen, or both, as part of the group that does the negotiation. That would be my sense. And I, and I think we do have to address this thing. And I, and I think we do have to address this thing fairly soon because they would like to get started in July. Does that put us out of business? Nothing's sure in this world, except death and taxes, I've been told. And the reality is that Boundless, for all of their good intentions, could end up not working out. So it would not be prudent for the Municipal Light Board to fold its tent at this point and say, well, we've done our job and we're all going into retirement. End of Municipal Light Plant Experiment Number Two. The other one was in the 1930s, if some of you remember your history. So I think what, what our job is, we've got to continue to explore the municipal options that are part of our mission statement, just in case the Boundless option or something else doesn't work out. Or down the road, it turns out that a deal is negotiated and the town picks up the asset from Boundless when they get sold to a, to another entity. We don't know what's down the road, so it makes sense, since we already are set, to continue to pursue the, pursue the, well, I guess, lack of better terms, the public option. And so that's my, that's my point. I think from your side, I think it's, you should probably delegate a lot of the nuts and bolts of this back to us to negotiate.
If I could just make one more.
Yeah, let's, let's start to wrap this up.
Yep, one more point that hasn't really been made is, a municipally-owned network can be an open network, which means that Internet service providers can come to town and set up shop. It doesn't have to be just one. And they can come and they can go. They can fail and we can find new ones. So that's something that we're giving up when we go with the private one. We don't totally have to give it up because they can still pursue and maybe there'll be another option, but I don't personally envision two sets of fiber being strung through town.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, wait a minute.
Sorry.
Can we get some guidance or some direction about how to move forward on this?
So I have, I have a suggestion.
Keep it around the talking.
So my suggestion would.
I bet that, by the way.
So my suggestion would go along the lines of making a request of the MLP to continue, they've had the dialogue, I wasn't part of the RFI, RFP process, find out, have, request MLP to continue their discussions with Boundless, with this company, and develop a list of asks. What exactly is it that, that the town will be asked of? I can assume perhaps it's grants of licenses, but I'd like to know that for certain and I don't think that's the town manager's office role at this point. MLP initiated the discussions with Boundless through an RFI process. And so that would be my suggestion. To move us immediately forward and get us past this agenda item tonight is to, is to make the request of MLP that it sit back down with Boundless and find out exactly, develop a list of asks. Specifically, what is it?
Makes sense.
Of the town that would be requested.
Could I just ask one more question on that? Because to the Congress side of that, I think we're looking for some direction on what the town would like to get in potentially in return. That, that's, that's, there's two halves of that. They have asks of what they'd like from the town, but is there anything that the town would like?
And wouldn't that be the MLP, you've done some work around what the town, I'm just, you've done a lot of work around that.
That's what I thought. You, you guys know better.
That's fine.
What they can give to us.
Asking for guidance, that's fine.
Because they've done, spent a lot more time on it than we have.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Well, it's the only thing to do next, I think.
I agree.
Does that make sense?
I had said that prior to the board.
Should've said that 30 minutes ago.
We learned a lot though, didn't we?
I heard him thinking it, but he just wouldn't verbalize it.
So can you give it a little more time and come back and tell us what's the final answer and?
And, I'm sorry, one more comment. And Peter, correct me if I go astray with this. So, so I would request as part of that that the MLP, I've, I've been the liaison to, to the group since, since I got here last June, report back to me. MLP can't bind, you know, the, the town through any of those, but just report back to me on those and then we'll have that discussion again.
Makes sense. Does that make sense?
So can, to clear up that, so, so Matt doesn't send you another email, because I know he says.
Fine, man, I, we exchanged a couple of emails and I told him thank you for the information.
Because they're going to ask, does the town want us to have direct contact with them? And I just.
They go through the MLP at this point?
Okay, that's fine.
They go through the MLP at this point?
Very soon.
Makes sense. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, let's.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. License renewals, 2024 seasonal, spring annual.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Renshaw.
Real quickly, so we have three entities, businesses, that are, are due for their secondhand dealer license renewal. Ringing resale, 557 North River Highway. Building Bees and Boy, Cape Kids Treasure, 15th Davis Straits. And lastly, Hanush, hopefully pronouncing that right, Jewelers, 352 Main Street. I'm recommending that the Select Board approve the 2024 seasonal and spring secondhand dealer license renewals for Blue Ring Resale, Cape Kids Treasures and Hanush Jewelers as presented.
I approve approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the secondhand dealer license. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, I'm going to move on.
Would you volunteer to read the consent agenda?
Would you, please? Oh, that would be huge, thank you.
Consent agenda, licenses approved application filed by King Kraken Incorporated, doing business as Romeo's or Romeos for new common victual license located at 75 Davis Straits Falmouth. Number two is administrative orders, approve the petition of N-Star Electric Company, DBA Eversource Energy for permission to install approximately five feet of one three-inch PVC conduit under town sidewalk, starting at existing handhole 44 slash HA 13 dash A at the base of existing pole 44 slash 13 dash A, southerly to customers' private property. This work is necessary, necessary to provide electric service to 5 Arisfield Avenue. B is accept FY 24 wellness grant in the amount of $600,000 from Cape Cod Municipal Health Group to the Human Resources Department grant account. Item C, approved request from Falmouth Cultural Council to apply to the Henry and Virginia Barron's Trust Fund for its music outreach program for the homeless, music at the table. Item D, appoint a member to the Board of Registars of Voters, Kathleen Mortenson. Item E, authorize the non-binding solar letters of intent, LOIs, for the senior center and water treatment plant. And that's it for the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second Ms. Scott Price's motion, move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the minutes.
Minutes look good to me.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Well, are we going to approve and release?
I think they can be released, can't they? Oh, no, the one is Workman's Comp, that shouldn't be. Don't need to release that, right?
I was laughing.
One of the minutes was a Workman's Comp settlement, we should not release that, right?
Has it been settled?
It is.
It has been settled, but I don't, I'd have to look at the contents of it to know, like if there's our privacy concerns.
Just hold it. Just approve them for now.
Well, let's approve both of the executive session minutes for February 12th, 20, and 24th and February 26th, 24th, not released to the public at this time.
Perfect.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so we'll approve them and not put them out. Mr. Renshaw?
Just a real quick update. A town planner wanted me to get some information out in regards to Shiverick's Pond Improvement Project. Do you all know there's three elements, the viewing fishing platform, a vistic clearing, clearing of existing vegetation at the southern end of the pond. And lastly, the access park, which is a development of a small sitting park at the west side of the pond. Wanted the Select Board and the community to know that on April 1st, Cape Cod Tree Care will begin clearing trees from that area in preparation for the Parks Department Arbor Day replanting activities. Jeremiah Pearson, our tree warden, who we heard from earlier this evening, have determined that there are no, there are relatively few native trees in that area. They're invasive species, I've been told. And the plan is to remove those non-native trees and replace them with native low-maintenance plantings. I just wanted the community and the Select Board to know that there's going to be some tree falling around Shiverick's Pond on April 1st, just so that if you get any calls, that's what it's about. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Okay, Select Board reports. Mr. Muscally? Mr. Brown?
God bless you.
I attended a Blowing to Each Other meeting and I'm starting to take a little more interest in that. It's a great group to help local people that are experiencing homelessness. And that's it for me this week.
And they, the purpose of the meeting was they had acquired the Gerald Flynn House, which is really awesome. That, that particular group is really moving in heaven and earth to.
Yeah.
Make it work.
And the Falmouth Housing Trust is doing well, too. Good, good decision.
Ms. Scott Price? Okay, I have a couple things. So Mr. Brown took my BTEO. I did a follow-up at the police station last Friday and it, there have been great improvements. I didn't feel that sort of smelly sick when I got in there, although maybe I did catch some. I'm not sure. But I, to quote the chief, I said, you know, it is still gross. And he goes, yeah, but it's clean gross. I thought that was perfect. The other thing is, I just want to make sure everybody got their list for the precinct meetings. And I'd like to have an idea, and I actually had to rewrite them because I had to do them by date.
I've saved them all in my calendar. I'm going to go to precinct five and six because that's my neighborhood.
I'm going to do three and I think four and seven, which is March 28th and April 2nd.
I have four and seven, too.
Okay, oh, good, then you do that, I'll do.
In case. Can we do seven?
I'll do March 28th.
I can, I think I can do nine, that's April 2nd.
I'll do eight and nine.
Okay, how about one and two, five and six?
Well, I've got five and six, but if you want to come too, that's great.
Okay. All right, so just make sure, I just want to make sure that it.
It'll change before then anyway, we'll, we'll cover it. You'll be sick anyway.
Okay, Mr. Zelensky?
No. Good, thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Close.
To adjourn?
Yes, ma'am, motion adjourned.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those, any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
We have to sign, right?
Yes, please.